Hello, Kako. Mahalo for joining us today. We will begin with a Pule by Lama Phong. Lama.
Hey, this is my.
If you want.
You know, like, okay.
Mahalo. Yeah, the meeting is being held virtually on Zoom and in person at the Pukukalo Community Center, 657 Amua Lee Street, Waileku Maui, Hawaii, 96793. Colly Watson, Chairman of the Commission. Today's date is Tuesday, September 16, 2025, and the time is 9:42. Leah, will you please call the rolls?
Commissioner Freitas will be joining us later. Commissioner Kalakini and Kalapara, excuse. Commissioner Koneakuwa.
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua.
Aye.
Commissioner Marfil.
Eo.
Commissioner Namu Obayzum.
Ee.
Commissioner Ornellis.
Eo.
And Chair Watson.
Here.
We have six members present. We have a quorum.
Okay, we will begin this morning with public testimony, followed by the J agenda. The Commission will recess for lunch and it contests a case hearing at 12:30, hoping to reconvene at 1:30 to continue with the remainder of the J agenda. Okay, and let me, when we do the J agenda, you know, again, we've got a pretty, we've got over 20 people that are going to be testifying. So if you can really stay within your time limit, 10 out of respect for the other people, that'd be appreciated. But we'll first start with the public testimony on agenda items, and that's Kalani Tassel.
Hello, Chair.
Aloha.
All Commissioners.
Aloha.
Yeah. Aloha. Kalamayau for not coming last night, but I ended up with goat and I couldn't even climb in my truck. But I did have my staff, my team actually, to come get the beef soup for you guys, so I hope you enjoyed that.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're very welcome. Couple of victories that we've had in our community, we got the fence done completely around the park. We got the backstops, the big backstop, probably like 80,000 that got done thanks to the HHL. And the small backstops got done. One of my Board of Directors will come in and should do some of the stuff with the road repairs that we need. We did have a tire removal in my community. We had two Saturdays. We collected over 100 tires in both Saturdays. It was so good, guys from other communities was coming into our community to bring their tires. But, you know, we still took them and told them, okay, you guys gotta go. My testimony this morning is, I have a concern with the Boys and Girls Club. I am not against the Boys and Girls Club. They have a fantastic program. I just think and feel that this is not the place for it. And due to my concerns through, that I've shared with Kelly Pearson. My concerns is the traffic, yeah? There'll be over 100 to 200 cars come pick up these 200 kids that they're going to bring into our community. If you look to your left, I asked them to do an egress on that way, but she said, no, can't, okay? But if you look to your left, these cars are going to be going in and out to this community. Same time as coming out of schools, kids are being picked up. Same time that our park is full with baseball kids. So there's going to be a big congestion over here. I asked him if they could do an egress on Waileu Beach Road, and she said, no. So what's going to happen? This is what's going to happen. On Kali, on the left side, we have two egresses, Kali and Kohio on that side. Now, this is what I foresee, all this traffic jam in this small period of time of all these cars coming in and out of our small community. And what's going to happen is, on Kali, you would have a car turning left. They're going to get stuck. They're going to be traffic jammed. And like, I want parents, so I know, I mean, when my kids were small, we always in a rush doing what I call a bewitching hour between four and six. We want to get to our destination fast, get the food, get the kids, pick it up and go home. But in the meantime, we're not respectful for the community that we in. Kalakaua is the only street in our community that doesn't have speed bumps. That's the only street. And the reason is, when they have road repairs on Waileu Beach Road, that's a bypass. They use that as a detour road, Kalakaua. During that time when these kids are being picked up, there's a lot of kids on Kalakaua playing after school. So when that traffic over there gets stuck on Kali, they're going to turn right on Kalakaua. So there's a lot of movement that's going to be going on within this short period of time of all these cars picking up. So, you know, I said, Kelly, how are you going to bring these kids in? You're going to bus them in? Okay, how are they going home? She said, well, the parents got to pick them up. Because I told them, she goes, oh, kids don't drive. As far as I go, yeah, parents got to pick them up though, right? So my concern is just the traffic jam in here and also the movement of all these cars in this small window of time, five days a week. And then Fridays, when you go on party, you're going to have this parking lot food and you're going to have all this traffic jam for the cars moving from that building behind you back to the main road. That's my concerns. And it's a great program, but just, I disagree with the location. You know, so I asked that you guys reconsider their location and because I told them, like, the old Sports Authority, big parking lot, big building. The old Safeway, big parking lot, big building. And they closed all mainstream, the main roads. So that's my concern today. And I speak on behalf of my community. Some of my Board of Directors may disagree, but some of them do agree with my concern. And I think it's a major concern that you need to reconsider in the leasing of this property in our community. Thank you. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you very much.
Oh, questions?
No.
Charity, all right, thanks. Hey, the first person on the J agenda, J one, Kiko Inomoto.
Aloha mai, Kako. I'm going to be testifying on the J agenda on behalf of three people. My president emeritus of Pa'upena Community Development, Inc., Uncle Norman Abihi, who is my neighbor at Waileu Lee Homestead, and Temma Watson, who is a paid staff member of Pa'upena, and myself. And so, Uncle Norman, why don't you go first? You want to go first? Or you want me to go first? Okay, I'll go first. Okay. I'm going to read the testimony that I submitted to the department in writing so that it would get on the, in the packet. "On behalf of the Maui Beneficiary Nonprofit Pa'upena Community, Inc., or CDC, I Ho'oma Holo, Maui Homeland's Leaders Who Met for Pulehunui South Planning Sessions, September 27 and October 11. We convened to form a prospective Pulehunui Homeland's Advocacy Mercantile Group of seven or more beneficiary-owned Valley Isle entities, including Friends of Pulehunui, Hawaii Terra Farm LLC, Hawaii Ulu Ola Omaui, Makana Noke Kaya Ulu, Pa'upena CDC, Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association, and the fledgling Kamalani Hawaiian Homestead Association. We brainstormed at length on educational agricultural training, beneficiary gardening, arts and culture, and mercantile opportunities for 100 acres or so of community lands fronting and adjacent to Maui Veterans Highway. Our hope is that the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's Land Management Division, DHL Office, Planning Office, and the Hawaiian Homes Commission grant a beneficiary consultation in or after next month and commission consideration in or after January of 2026 of the group's request for a right of entry to the Pulehunui South Community acreage." So that's my written testimony. Go ahead, Uncle Norman.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
And good morning, Commissioners. My name is Norman Abihi. I have a question. We've been waiting for a long time for water, water meter up there at the 127 acres. I don't know why, why it's taking so long, Mr. Chair, to give us the kind of water meter. You know, we got we got a 30,000 gallon tank up there already with no water. So, and we cannot farm and ranch without water. And we got we got a couple of greenhouses that is, that is on hold because we don't have any water. So, so I thought us guys, the kind of beneficiary has a first chance at water or water meter, you know, is, it's just been too long. Why? Why are you guys taking so long? You guys wanted to build one, not build, but drill three wells up at Waileu Lee. And what about our water meter? But you guys get money for drill three wells, but cannot give us one water meter? What's up with that? You guys not working together or what? There's no, no more communication. So that's one of the problems that we have up there. We also brought in the kind of alcoholics to come inside and survey, clean up whatever they found so we don't disturb our kupuna. We like be porno with them, so, you know. So when can we have a water meter? Mr. Chair?
I thought you said you have a water meter.
We don't have a water meter.
So you've been working with the Border Water Supply?
Yeah, in fact, we send you one diagram of how to do them. We'll see how to approach them.
Okay, let me, you know, I'm sorry, I don't.
May I give you an update, Chairman? So on August 25th, we received a letter from the depart, you received a letter from the Department of Water Supply from John Stoffelbean saying that these are, these are plans that DWS has approved for the three water meters that Uncle Norman is asking for on our 127 acre parcel. And so I asked Sheri Noel, Ka'ana Na, what the update is on this letter that you folks received in August. And this was what she responded to me this week. Aloha'e ana ke kiko'a. Mahalo for your message and updating us on Pa'upena's preference. The Planning Office, DHL Planning Office, has sent memos to the Land Development Division and Land Management Division in the department for their manao and will need to meet internally as the next step. We will keep you apprised of any assistance Pa'upena may assist us with. Now, the history of this request for water for this aina is that Ikaika Anderson, when he was the department chair, wrote a letter to DWS. And it's taken us almost three years to implement this request. And so finally in August, we get this letter from DWS and we're celebrating it. But the ball is in the court of DHL now. And Sheri is telling us, well, it's in LDD, it's in LMD, they have to get back to us. And this is two months ago. And so Uncle Norman is just, you know, putting an exclamation point on the fact that we would like these water meters. And, you know, we're meeting with USDA to put in fencing and agroforestry up there, but honestly, we do need water on that acreage. So, do you have anything else to say, Uncle Norman?
Yeah, one more thing, that since we're having all this project coming on, on building, we never had one beneficiary consultation on the Waileu project. We never had a beneficiary consultation on the Waikapu project. So when are we going to have a beneficiary consultation? This is all a, this is all a kanaka, like Noel. Where the property is there? Who the owner? What they going to do? All that. We like one screen like this, not one chalkboard, one screen like this. Where you guys can present yourself with all our facts and whatever need to be done. That's what we wanted to have, a beneficiary consultation. Every project that you guys come up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Norman. And I'm going to read this letter from Temma Watson. And I realized that in some of this was covered yesterday during the meeting. But she asked me to read her written testimony. And I'm going to do it just as, to demonstrate her frustration and anger a little bit. And I'm not speaking, this is not speaking on my behalf, I'm just speaking on her behalf. And as I say, she is a paid staff member of Pa'upena, and she is a beneficiary. And she has an MBA in accounting. So she's a very educated, intelligent woman. Aloha, Chair, Commissioners, and any members of the Maui Department of Water Supply. My name is Temma Watson, and I am an undivided interest leaseholder here on Maui. I hold a paper lease, a promise from the Department of Homeland, Department of Homeland, Hawaiian Homeland, that one day I will receive my aina in Waileu Lee. That promise was made more than 20 years ago, and I am still waiting. I am living proof that DHL system has failed the very people it was meant to serve. I possess the paper, but not the land. I am evidence that paper leaseholders now called project leases have not benefited our stand with others, wait, have not benefited our people. I find that I, as a beneficiary, must now advocate and stand with others to hold DHL accountable for its breach in fiduciary duty and insist on systemic changes. We are overlooked while new developments are fast-tracked elsewhere. Now, DHL wants to move forward with the Waileu Lee Wells Agreement that would give nearly half of our trust water to the county and to non-beneficiaries. This is a violation of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act of 1920 and the trust duties DHL is legally bound to uphold. In Ahona versus DHL, 1981, the Hawaii Supreme Court ruled that DHL has the same fiduciary duty as any private trustee. That means acting with loyalty, transparency, and good faith toward beneficiaries, not secrecy and deceit. On July 30, 2025, DHL Inc. a $2.46 million procurement contract with Austin Sutsuomi and Associates before any consultation and without approval from the Hawaiian Homes Commission. When asked about this contract during a meeting with the homestead leaders on September 15, DHL staff claimed it was just for, quote, "data," unquote. But at the August 21 beneficiary consultation, beneficiary consultation, that same contract was never disclosed. This is deceitful. Furthermore, you are using $2.46 million, our trust dollars, to divert water away from our homeland, other homelands. This is now by eha all over again, only this time betrayed by our own people. Meanwhile, the other side of this contract win with no cost to them. The houli developers are laughing at you, all of you. Please open your minds and your scopes beyond Kamalani because there is bigger plan for developers in the long-range plan. With this deal, you will come back and tell us, quote, "No more water," unquote. Quote, "We got to look for water," unquote, to approve land that is already there, available, and rightfully deserves this water. We have hundreds of acres of land up here, up there, that will now need to wait. That is the betrayal of the trust that DHL is sworn to protect. The people of Waileu Lee and Ke'okea, who have waited for decades for water, are still struggling. The taps are dry while DHL justifies giving away trust resources to the county for projects that haven't even completed proper assessments or included beneficiary input. Our community is not against progress. We are against being erased from it. We demand that this process be stopped immediately until full and fair consultation is held with beneficiaries. Those who live here, wait here, and belong here. Every drop of water from Waileu Lee must remain for Hawaiian Homeland's use first, as the law requires. Water is life. For us, it is our dignity, justice, and survival. I will be submitting my testimony for the record. Make aloha nui. Mahalo, Temma Watson. Now, I want to, how am I doing, Leah, on my, on Paul? Okay. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Next person to testify, J two, Janice Henry. Her, excuse me, and friends.
Aloha. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Gracie Gomes. I come from Pukukala, Hawaiian Homes. And today, my testimony is about access, the word access. So for many years, our community has had a simple, reliable process to use the spaces, the community park, the community center. And what we would do is normally contact DHL, come to the office, ask them if availability is there for us to reserve a spot, take our names down. Well, lately, it's become ridiculously hard to reserve any space at this time. And we don't know why. So access is what we want to be able to have whenever the community needs it. So, and the reason for that is because the gatherings are more than just events. They are how we strengthen our relationships with the community, celebrate our culture, and pass down the traditions that each and every family member has. So the process, like I said, has become uncertain. We request, now, our requests are being referred to, I believe, to land management at this time. So however long the decisions take, it does not come back in time for us to be able to hold our events or any personal gatherings at all. So this kind of creates a hardship and weakens the sense of connection that we have with the very spaces that was built for this community. Understand that we need, we need to be safe and also understand the security policies that DHL has with the center and with the parks. But our community cannot be left in limbo. We humbly ask the HHL and land management to work with us to create a process that is clear, timely, and consistent, one that honors our needs and our rights to gather in the place we all call home. Mahalo.
We have a PowerPoint. We have a PowerPoint coming up. We're going to talk about our project, which we've named Pa'upene mai and mahalo to ana ke kiko'a in a motto for the name. It's to clean and revitalize an area in our homestead. This is the former armory site that's located on Kohio Place. I don't know if you've seen it. Okay, so we proposed to steward this 1.77 acre lot to develop a community-operated, resilient, and culturally porno space. It's going to be a place for cultural practices, for education and connection, a resource for food sustainability, a place to develop income opportunities that empower us as a community to thrive. And as a community, we will work to protect our aina for the well-being of current and future generations. I'm going to give you a brief history of this area. From the late 1920s to 1962, it was known as Camp Pukukalo Training Site, Department of Defense. From 1962 to 2004, it became the Operational Maintenance Shop, Department of Defense, Hawaii Army National Guard. In 1997, the Department of Defense Hawaii submitted a request to cancel this executive order that granted the land to the military, and it was formally returned to DLNR. In 2010, DHL regionally, I'm sorry, we missed a spot. There's a step there, where DLNR then turned the land over to DHL. And then in 2010, we're going to talk a little bit about the DHL regional plan, which included the development of the site. Okay, this is the 2010 Pukukalo Wa'eheko Regional Plan. Okay, I'm sorry, I need my notes. So the Pukukalo Armory Site development was classified as a priority project. Among the critical paths identified was environmental mitigation to be addressed and an environmental assessment for the development of a community center and infrastructure. The process was to have been initiated by December 2011. We obtained these reports from the Department of Defense through the Freedom of Information Act. This is the former armory site, former armory site on Kohio Street. The 2005 photo was from the report that we received, and this is it currently. Now, this is a map from the Environmental Baseline Survey. The heading above the legend identifies the environmental condition of property types defined by the Department of Defense. The purple colored area, you see that rectangle there, is where only the release or disposal of petroleum products has occurred. The five gray colored areas are identified as have not yet been evaluated or that require additional evaluation. Next slide, please. These are just some photos of, that they took when they did the report. Soil piles between the buildings. Okay, and next slide, please. Okay, so what are we doing to address the possible contamination in this parcel? Oops. We created a partnership or began the process of collaborating with the Brownfields Assessment Project. This is a partnership of Ha Sustainability on Maui and Maui United Way funded by the EPA. What are brownfields? Brownfields are abandoned or underused properties that may be contaminated with hazardous substances, pollutants, or contaminants, which can complicate their redevelopment or reuse. Benefits of addressing this include the reduction of public health risks associated with contamination as well as economic growth. We are currently in phase one, which is the non intrusive investigation to determine potential contamination, looking to move into phase two, which then is a sampling and analysis. Slide eleven, okay. Other possible, other partners that we're looking at are Community Cooperative Extension Service. It's a Maui D H H L, our extension person, who's awesome, by the way, as well as the Hawaii Farmers Union, Monica Holavi chapter. We're looking at them for expertise in agriculture-related aspects necessary to reach our goal of food sustainability. Ha Sustainability is climate change resilience and sustainability consulting. Maui United Way EPA provide the funding to identify and remediate specific areas containing contaminants. We're looking at Maui County Grants and other grants to be determined. What do we request of D H, D H H L? Our ask is for right of entry, which we know we have to start. Funding for replacement to surround, surround the parcel. It's, uh, the fencing is rusted and broken in areas. I think a few cars have ran into it, so that's another point. Additional funding if we need more for remediating the project, the parcel. And in conclusion, we hope we've given you, Chair Watson and Commissioners, a positive view of our community. Pococolo chooses to place our focus on moving forward to improve our Aina. We are actively pursuing resources wherever they may be, and we will continue to do so. Mahalo Nui.
Awesome. Okay, Jimmy Kincaid here with the Pococolo Hawaiian Homes Community Association. Uh, thank you, Chairman Watson and Commissioners. I've issued each of you a packet of some road repair. So in one of our meetings, some of the community members came forward to express their concern about the roads in their, in their community, on their streets. So we just took it upon ourselves to go out and go get some estimates. So we got a couple of estimates and, um, what we came up with was, we got two estimates, one from Sunny Vic Paving Company and a second from Pacific Asphalt. And, uh, basically, there are four streets that we address, Pumehana Street, Pohala Street, Wa'ohna Street, and Kikania Street, Kikania Place. And the roads, you know, this development was started in the early sixties. So the roads have not been readdressed since then, so they're, they're dilapidated. So, um, basically, we got a price for lump sum price for, for the repair of seventy three thousand five hundred sixty feet for three hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred dollars. And then the striping was three thousand, mobilization thirty three hundred for a lump sum price of three fifty nine two thirty five. In addition to that, we got a quote for the basketball court, which is not being used, for forty seven thousand. So to remediate the roads, in addition to the basketball court, four hundred seven thousand. So that's what we're looking for, to help this community address the needs of repaving the roads. So if you could kindly put that on your plate, review that, and, um, see if you could find some money for this association to remediate this condition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next testifier, J three Andrea Buckman and Ilama Farm, J ten.
Aloha, Kako.
Hello.
My name's Andrea Buckman. Um, I'm the Executive Director of Uhiwai Haleakala. Thank you. I'm here today to discuss my history with Department of Fine Homelands at Kahiki Nui, the progress we've made on funding and forest restoration over the last fifteen or so years, and, um, give you some, some updates and requests as we move forward. I have a PowerPoint. Thank you. Thank you so much. So Kahiki Nui is the heart of the watershed forest, the heart of native habitat that's left on Leeward Haleakala. All of sixty five percent of all the remaining native habitat is in Department of Fine Homelands at Kahiki Nui. On the entire island of Maui, only five percent of that dry forest remains. So of the five percent remaining, D H H L holds sixty five percent of that. So I first started as a volunteer with Oahu Forest Restoration in two thousand four. Since then, I, I worked with the Leeward Haleakala Watershed Restoration Partnership. And then I ended up forming Uhiwai Haleakala to help support and expand and accelerate native habitat restoration. So Uhiwai has been established since two thousand eighteen. I was profoundly inspired by working with the community at Kahiki Nui, by interacting with the plants and species of this area as well as across the whole slope. And Kahiki Nui is the heart of this. So this is a, an overview of the project areas at Kahiki Nui. You know, you folks have the entire Moku over twenty three thousand acres. We've been able to help support fencing of four thousand five hundred acres of that. That's the core of the forest that's remaining. You can see the community, you know, the exposition of everything there, where the location of a lot of things that we're gonna talk about later are located. Next slide. So, um, when I first started here, Kahiki Nui became a founding member of the Leeward Haleakala Watershed Restoration Partnership. So that outline is in pink. This is part of a cohort of groups established on Maui that allows adjacent landowners, public and private, to come together and restore areas in an ecological context. So without looking at landowner boundaries, without looking at TMKs, because the issues of fire, of invasive species, rapid ohiadess, these things don't stop at landowner boundaries. So you can see where the Leeward Haleakala Partnership is in pink. The green is the East Mai Watershed Partnership, and the turquoise is Monica Holavi Watershed Partnership. This is also part of a greater, it's become what, what was founded on Maui is now part of a state network composing over two point two million acres. So the, the focus, the importance of this is you guys were, were central to being a part of something that's become a huge system to establish protection of the headwaters of our most important water capture systems, the tops of the mountains, the core remnant forests, and areas that we hope to continue to connect from the top of the mountains to the coastline to preserve our cultural resources, our ecological biodiversity, increase our resilience against climate change and all the myriad challenges we face. So my work started at Oahu. We know that this system works because you can see it. Started as ten acres in two thousand four, then twenty three, then thirty three more, and then the partnership was formed, and that encompasses over forty three thousand acres. So this is one of the test plots that we did before starting the fencing at Kahiki Nui. This is just to the east at Nakula Natural Area Reserve. That square in the foreground is a test plot where we demonstrated different spacing of koa na ali'i. That now will serve as a seed source to help restore the rest of the mountain. If you look above, you can see what is degraded pasture, you know, areas denuded by invasive cattle, fire, and invasive pasture grass. You can see where the fence line is starting to have an impact in this slide. Go ahead. If you see from here now, you're looking from top to bottom, this is a few years later. You can see the square in the bottom now, and you can really see the demarcation between the fence line of the native habitat that's recovering, both from natural generation and from planting. So this is actually state land right next door to D H H L. This is what we're hoping for. This is what we know is possible at Kahiki Nui. Next slide, please. This is another view of that landscape. So we've been waiting a long time at Kahiki Nui. The fence has been built. It's taken many, many years for the, the process to be approved and move forward for the animals to be removed. But that is the next step. That's the most important thing in fulfilling this community's plans and all the, the plans, you know, that complement that, both at a statewide, um, Pacific-wide, and even a global level of importance. Protecting these watershed forests and this biodiversity, especially for this community as, as its main source of water, is tremendously important, and we know that this is possible. We're really excited to see the next steps that you folks have approved in terms of removing the animals. And we're hoping that you're gonna continue that, that progress forward. So right now, we're working, and if you can see the, the lime green section to the right, that's the, the aerial images I just showed. And Kahiki Nui Department of Fine Homelands is just to the left. So right now, the perimeter fence has been constructed. It's nine point three miles. But we're still working in this tiny little hundred and seventeen acre unit at the bottom, because that's the only area where we have opportunity to remove animals completely. Um, our team right now is still working to manage that fence, collect seeds, manage invasive species, and we're hoping that, um, soon we'll start to see the recovery of this forest too. Go ahead. So since I started coming out to Kahiki Nui probably in two thousand seven, all the work we've done has been based in the community's plans and the department's plans. So starting with the community conceptual plan, what they laid out in nineteen ninety five still stands. It's still a really powerful document. It holds so much strength and foresight and had so much input from a lot of experts, residents, practitioners. And that is what we have focused all of our work on, um, that fundamental document. In nineteen ninety seven, a fog drip study was done with D H H L and Dr. Jim Juvek. We've since brought Dr. Juvek back to help actually implement this. That's a whole nother update that Ilama will share with you later. Then the partnership was formed in two thousand three with D H H L as a founding member. Kahiki Nui is one of the first Firewise certified communities on Maui in two thousand eight. Uh, we did an environmental assessment, cultural assessment, archaeological surveys in two thousand eleven. After the fires in two thousand sixteen, there was another Firewise update. Then the Southwise Firewise plans were completed in twenty eighteen. And the Leeward Haleakala Watershed Restoration Partnership Management Plan, which is what we're currently working under right now from twenty eighteen that goes until twenty twenty eight. So this is just a subset of the plans I've been intimately involved with, and it's something to be really proud of, and it's something that, um, we hope the department will continue to stand behind. There's a tremendous body of work that lays the foundation for, for this restoration, for fire to actually protect this community, to bring water resources back, to create all types of economic resources and resilience to the region. So I learned how to write grants, doing, doing this work kind of by default. And we've been able to, it was crazy adding it up yesterday, but it's, it's over four, four million dollars that has been put into this effort. Most of that is public money, taxpayer money through CIP fencing. A lot of the state, um, money, the County of Maui Department of Water Supply has put in money. D H H L has put in some money. I hope, I hope we can increase that. And right now, the, the sections in bold are what we currently have partial funding to continue to pursue. So green breaks, that's planting densely within the forested fence area so we can slow the fire to keep it from transferring into the native habitat restoration area. Expanding the reservoir, repairing old water sources there so that the pilots can fly and access water. It can be for community grazing. There's multiple reasons to restore these two old reservoirs. And then continued the basic operation of fence inspection and repair. It's the key to respecting that investment that's already gone in. So this is above the clouds. You can see the levered ecosystems are all based in cloud drip, you know, passive water capture. Koa forest evolved specifically to capture that, and without any trees, you see the clouds just go by. We get soaked up there, the fence gets soaked, but no water is going into the aquifer. It's not going into the streams. It's not feeding the ecosystem. So we're really, you know, interested in seeing these, this restoration accelerated so that we can see trees start to come up in this side of the, you know, this collaborative project as well. This is some of the fence repairs, why it's super important to have constant management up there. We have vandalism on the left. That's where people have cut the fence, and you can see the animal trail, where they've just wanted to let animals go in and out. Animals dug under the fence in the, the top right picture, and just quickly, you know, in, in just a couple months' time, they, they create a, a big ravine there. And then on the bottom right is where animals have completely run through and trampled it. So you, you're having all types of risks. There's been infrastructure put up here. We have campsites we have to maintain. We have invasive species we manage. These are some of the highest, highest risk species that we work in, in the forest up there. Fire, again, when you see fires happen, this is in twenty sixteen, and then a huge storm. All that, all that soil just went right into the coast.
Okay, Mrs. Beck Buckman, um, thank you very much. Were you gonna say something? Oh, okay, you guys are together.
Okay, thank you. I think that's
Very impressive what you both are doing.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate all your work. Did you wanna say anything, if you were?
I have my own presentation, Chair.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, the next.
So now it's
Oh, yeah. Okay, now it's your turn. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Aloha, Makako, to the Chair and to the Commissioner. Uh, I am Kyle Elama Farm, President of Ka'ohana or Kahiki Nui. We are descendants of Hawaiian homeland pioneers dedicated to protecting and restoring our Moku. Before every meeting, we always acknowledge the kupuna that came before us. You know, mahalo to our Kahiki Nui pioneers who literally paved the way for generations of Kanaka to benefit from their efforts. They established the foundational principles that continue to guide our community today. Next, next, please. Uh, I'm here to give, uh, the Commission and the Chair a status update of everything that we're doing in Kahiki Nui since my last year's testimony. I'll be covering our current grants, projects, addressing fire safety, cultural sites protection, touching on enforcement a little bit and, and highlighting some of our volunteers. We, we have completed three county grants. We're applying for County Grant Four for thirty five thousand dollars. If we're giving this award, we'll be able to finish our community center, install an exterior toilet and septic system. I wanted to highlight one of our board members, Warren Aganos and his Lo'Kahi team, also to George Amau and his road maintenance team, also to our Firewise Compliance Team, and also to the department's broadband team that, that they provided us with the Starlink system that connects. We get Wi-Fi at this community center and at the gate. Here are some pictures of our volunteers. I wanted to highlight that we were able to enclose this structure with only twenty five thousand dollars. So the material, you know, one hundred percent of twenty five thousand dollars was for material and concrete. All the labor is free. Next. We closed out D H H L fog drip one. Uh, we're on, currently on D H H L fog drip two. We were able to purchase ninety five percent of our material. Data collected, uh, shows that we're, we're able to produce two thousand gallons of water in a single day. Next, please. This, this slide, um, just kind of shows a schematic of the, the cloud harvesting fog drip system. Next, please. And this is like a overall site plan. There's a thousand foot elevation from the collection point overland pipeline down to our community center where, um, residents will be able to fill, um, water toads in their trucks versus going to Ulupaliko Watering Hall, which is five miles away. And all that wear and tear, you know, we incur on our vehicles, so it'd be greatly beneficial. But, um, we have a deadline up till the end of twenty twenty seven. We didn't have enough money to address installations, so we were fortunate that we got approval for a Maui Hikina cohort grant. So this is a hui of, uh, a group So this is a hui of groups located in East Maui. Our portion is a hundred fifty thousand. With this money, we're gonna be able to address phase two, which is installing the overland pipeline and also the fog drip system itself. The fog drip netting system is a is approximately fourteen feet in height by three hundred feet long. And two of these structures will be requesting an expanded license to encompass the fog drip capture site and overland pipeline. We are working with D L N R on a fire mitigation corridor, corridor highlighted in yellow, starting at our main gate going out towards Kaul Pole. This corridor will be approximately three hundred feet wide. And the idea is to put domesticated grazing animals within that corridor to keep the fire load down. So we will be asking for a R O E for this corridor. Next please. And and highlighting, we support, you know, Kahiki Nui supports Uhi Vice reforestation project. We are looking at upgrading some of our roads so we'll have easier access to the upper forest. And, you know, and then we can get community involvement, especially the next generation, in introducing them to outplanting. We, I I participated in a energy transition initiative partnership project. We receive a money for that. And in the design, we came up with a resiliency hub, an education center based on the Lahaina temporary housing. Chair, you offered if we would be interested in in some of the temporary housing when they get decommissioned. So we went ahead and designed us this this unit of four structures. And and we would be able to have people come to Kahiki Nui and stay there for like three, five and seven day outreach education programs. This is a Kahiki Nui roadmap, kind of like that red square right there, right below. D H L Kahiki Nui community is approximately where the fire was, the most recent fire in August. Next please. It's kind of hard to tell, but these are some of the surveys that's been done in Kahiki Nui of cultural sites. The the white dots represent within the community, the yellow is right below. And you can kind of see how dense this area was. This is because the richness of the soil in Kahiki Nui was so highly valued that the population just converged on this particular area. Next please. This slide highlights, it's it's kind of hard to read. It's a, it's similar to a LiDAR image, but it uses infrared technology photogrammetry. The paths in blue are bulldoze paths. And you can kind of make out little lines of historical sites. And you can see how some of them are near misses and some are gone. And you can see all the tracks of bulldoze lines. So we're making a plan to address this. Next. We invited famous archaeologist Patrick Kirch to our community. We surveyed this, we got some input. We came up with a community safety plan and cultural site preservation. We also have a letter from Patrick Kirch in support of this. I also like to to highlight a cease and desist that was issued by our Maui office manager, Jermaine Bolino. You know, we always try to solve our internal problems internally. And once in a great while, we need assistance from the department. So my ask is to support the enforcement team and and Jermaine. Because once they issue the cease and desist to certain individuals that's, you know, not behaving correctly within our community, it really sent a clear message and the be the mischievous behavior stopped. So, I'd like to see us go down that road in in our role as, we're trying to act like Konohiki. And and with, as a Konohiki, we need enforcement as a last resort. Next please. Can you click click play, see if it plays? You know, a lot of people ask us about our volunteers. You know, these, this is one of our board members, Vanya Kanamu, and her grandchildren. It's something about Kahiki Nui that, I don't know, the love of Laina is just there. And and we we get buy-in from our young, our young ones. They love being there, they want to give back. And 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 this is an example of it, okay? Oh, and and that was a Evi kupuna site, by the way. Future projects that we have in line are signs and border security, update our law bylaws in D C C N Rs, and outreach education program to address cultural site protection, restoration and reactivation. Also, the outreach program can address native forest reforestation, connected to road improvements to the upper forest and to make our community life better, reservoir restoration, so we have additional sources of water in the event of a fire. And we reach, we annually plant community harvests to distribute meat throughout the whole community. This, this is a firewise cleanup that some of the community volunteers got rid of hazardous materials timely, right before the August fire. My request is, so thank you for approval of the one point five million dollars in the trust fund addressing road improvements. Maybe I'll I'll save that ask for last. We're also gonna ask for support of an expanded license for our fog drip project and ship decompliance. We're ready to go right now. We also support the R O E for the fire mitigation project along the highway with D L N R. And we 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 support the R O E requests for Uhi Vai for the reforestation project. My biggest ask from the the commission and the chair is if you would consider giving us this carryover budget of one point five, addressing road improvements to our nonprofit board. Let us manage the money and build the road to a grant. We, we, I ground this ask in in a in a fund that we had for over fifteen years. Oh, sorry, the funny slide came up at last. I don't know, we we got reports of three hitchhikers inside, like, you know, I don't know if you guys remember, but in in Chief of War, there was a scene in in episode one. And then that's when Kayaana's father died and they were carrying the Evi down the hill. All that was filmed in Kahiki Nui, but anyway. We had a, we had a ongoing fund of a hundred thousand dollars a year for self-help road improvements funds. And that's connected to our bylaws as well. That fund went away, I think you guys updated to one point five million. My ask is to take the 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 work away from land development. We're willing to administer the funds, given the chance. At the end of the day, thi- this is a jeep, this is a jeep road that we want to put concrete on it. It's not a highway maintained by the county. We believe we can do the, we can do the work. We believe that we can ultimately get more road for the money versus going through the state procurement process. I know it's a big ask and it's a long shot, but hey, why not? Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions? Thank you very much. Great, great presentations. Okay, the next person to testify, Blossom Fittera.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify on a few items. So my first thing is about water. So we all agree that water is necessary to open up new land. We agree that the water is necessary for us to provide our beneficiaries with a homestead lot. But there are outstanding commitments about water for this island, in particular for Ke'okea. So, in nineteen eighty six, there was a tri-party funding agreement made between USDA, County of Maui and D H L. That funding partnership was for the development of a non-potable water line that would go from Olinda all the way through to Ke'okea. This happened in nineteen eighty six. The project started in nineteen ninety, nine, ten years later. Nine million dollars was provided for that construction. The, they ran out of money, obviously. And there's, the line is now five miles short of its final destination. We have an agricultural community in Ke'okea that are unable to utilize their lots because there's no non-potable water. Now, we've been having this discussion with the commission and the department over the years, but I think now is a great time to bring it forward and put it back on the table. With the development of this water in Ke'okea and Waihuli, we need to start to take a look at how can that improvement benefit Ke'okea. And so, according to the County Department of Water Supply, it will run anywhere from thirteen to fifteen million dollars in order to complete the line. And so I would ask this commission, as we begin to continue to talk about water and the delivery of that to our other homestead areas that we keep Ke'okea up front and center and honor the commitment that was made in nineteen eighty six. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was regarding water is Pulehunui. So while we know that some of the Manao instructor identify South Maui as a recipient, there's no clear commitment from the department that Pulehunui would be able to get some of that water. So the community on Maui has worked very hard on developing a plan for community use. There is a plan with the department to initiate the development of agricultural homestead lots in Pulehunui. But again, that will not happen if we don't have access to water. Okay, so. So when we start to talk about this stuff, I mean, we've seen the vast improvement and success of Kaohanoa Kahiki Nui with the fog drip system, the amount of water they can capture, they're moving on. And they, most importantly, have gained significant skills in grant administration, in planning, in project deployment. And so I would second Mr. Farms' request that the department consider allocating that one point five million dollars to Kahiki Nui. They've got amazing skills and they have amazing people currently homesteading in Kahiki Nui that can bring those skills to to the table. And so, I believe I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, there was a testifying.
Lena Shiroda Purdy, she gonna testify?
Stand to public testimony. Hi, good morning. So I had sent in email testimony, my husband and myself, a while back regarding, we live in Waihuli. So what I just wanted to talk about today is just brush upon what other people have said so far. We're in Waihuli, we just recently moved there. My son is an undivided interest lessee. And we were concerned, of course, about the water situation up there and the unfinished houses that were from the U I list. With all that's being said, with how much money that we're getting allocated, you know, to to finish the hundred and thirty five houses that's coming up, I just thought that it was, you know, interesting in one point that Ke'okea is and has been, you know, before this extension of Waihuli and that they haven't been given the water that they should be given, especially with with agriculture being so important in our everyday lives. And then secondly, with the Pu'u Hona subdivision, you know, getting to be done in twenty twenty six, from what I heard at the meeting last night, and Waihuli still on the back burner of when we'll get that done, that's really a big concern for me. You know, we've had this U I lease for twenty something years and we're seeing other projects getting done and developed while we're still on the back burner. And then lastly, although we haven't really talked about the water wells, it is important to establish that water for our community, especially because right now, I've attended Department of Water Supply meetings recently up country and they're grasping at straws on where to get the water from. And right now, it's a big question of when can they get the water? And if they're relying on this water through the wells that D H L will put forward through our monies, I don't think that that's right. And I also feel that the infrastructure that Department of Water Supply has has in place is not adequate. And they don't want to fix what we already have, which is which Loa Kamoi, Kahakapau, all of these lines are losing water because of just poor infrastructure. And here, we're going to entrust them to take on our tanks and our our drilling when they have shown time after time that they cannot do the a good job themselves. And at a Waihuli meeting we had a month or so ago, I did point out to one of the women there that gave the presentation that if you guys look really into who is in Waihuli and where these people work, there is many people in Waihuli homestead that are part of the Department of Water Supply. And if there's any questions about how the upcountry water structure runs, these are really good people to get to know. And I won't name them, unfortunately, some of them are related to me. Alan Purdy, Myron Purdy, Byron Purdy, Wesley Purdy, Gundy Dancel, Derek Gomes. We're all homesteaders, we're on the list. And these guys run the upcountry system and they're very important. They care, take care of every day, broken lines, water issues. The calls come in, these are the guys that are out there, besides the other people in the Department of Water Supply. And I hope you utilize these people to ask them questions and to really put forward, you know, what is the purpose of having homesteaders be on a land with a lease that is just a paper? I mean, these people are waiting a long time and I hope you guys do what is right for the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. J five, Rulun Waikiki, the P'aku Kalo Hawaiian Homes Community.
Additionally, we also have Leanna Singh, Kili Koi, I think she's online. Good morning.
Morning.
Want to go first?
Aloha mai kako, my name is George. I am, I'm a member with the P'aku Kalo Hawaiian Homes Community Association, board of directors. I would like to speak about the improvement we have made to our community park. Yeah. The next, next slide. Okay. Okay, um, sorry. So, P'aku Kalo Community Park volunteer leads improvements. To everyone who had had a hand in ensuring that the park is a safe place, to everyone who donated time, skill, resources, to the many volunteers from the P'aku Kalo Hawaiian Homes community, community and their families, to the many volunteers of the baseball community, mahalo nui loa. Mahalo also to the Ha'oe Comes scenario, I won't let Nathan talk about that. Okay, the first slide is one of the volunteer repairing some, some lats in the Wahini's bathroom. The second photo is my son, he doing some repairs on the security gate. That's my son again, he changing out the, um, the light timer for the security light. And the next photo is Frank with the Akamai pumping. They're, they're just looking into the sewer line, getting funding the, um, the area that need to be addressed. And next, the next photo, please. And that's Darryl, I'm changing out the basketball hoop. And I'm gonna let Nathan take care of the rest of the photos.
Good morning, my name is Nathan Kava.
Good morning. My name is Nathan Kava. I'm with the baseball that uses the field. So first, thank you very much for the new backstops. They are wonderful and not a hazard anymore for the children to be around. We started using this field about twenty years ago with Uncle Hanalei that got us the area. I recently took over the organization in January. And Coach Ha in the back, he helped us get the field more usable, brought in dirt, machines. Um, I think on the next slide, there's some pictures of us working on it and we went from this time last year, thirteen kids using the field. I don't know if you guys saw it yesterday, there was over sixty out there and it was great to see kids not only from, that live in this community, but all around there. I grew up right across and played on this field as a little kid, so it's great that my kids get to come back and you know, we really appreciate using the field and everything, fixing everything. We would really like to water the field. And I know the water bill can be extensive, so if we can help out anyone with that and taking care of the field, mowing the area, all that kind of stuff. We have tons of volunteers within the baseball community that wanna come here and do work and do their part. So. Yeah.
Uh, I would like to, um, thank the commissioners and Chair Watson. We will not stop time. Aloha.
My turn. Um, I don't know if any of you came in through Kili'i Drive, came in through Kili'i turning onto Kamoli'i in order to get in here. That corner right there, I've seen buses hit cars. So if you're coming on Kili'i, turning on Kamoli'i and somebody's coming up, traffic literally sometimes comes to a complete stop. So I know Jimmy spoke about repaving the roads, um, identified certain streets that really need it. But that turn is, is crazy. It can be really crazy and it's unsafe, especially when our kids are walking home from school. We are the oldest on Maui and obviously there's no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalks. Um, I live right on that turn. My office window faces that turn. I see it all the time. I've ran out to help this old lady that got hit by the bus, not, her car got hit by the bus. So when you're coming around the turn, I would say about ninety percent, maybe ninety-five percent of all cars that coming around that turn from Kili'i onto Kamoli'i never stay on their side of the lane. And there's room. I mean, granted, probably some of my driveway might get taken off if the road was to be just, just widened just a little bit to enlarge something like this to separate the lanes. You put this up, I mean, it's not gonna damage cars. It's plastic on the top. But at least it'll give the drivers an idea like, hey, get on your own side of the lane. Um, of course, it would have to be strategically placed because it'll block two driveways. One is mine, but it can be done. And it's not just because I see it every day. It's for the safety of the community. So in addition to repaving of the roads, I think that's one concern that is really necessary for this neighborhood. Um, and I'm not sure whose responsibility is it if everything gets turned over to the county? If you guys need to go through the county to get that kind of stuff done, um, not just the widening, but even just put those barriers in between for now, that would really help. Um, I worked for the government for thirty-one years, so I know a bunch of stuff that you guys got to go through to get things done. Um, but that would really, really help. Um, reiterating access to our park. Uh, I think Gracie brought that up earlier. I did it for my chunka treat this year and it was crazy paperwork and stuff that we had to do just to use the park. I think maybe the Maui office could use a little bit more responsibility as far as making smaller decisions like that instead of the answer being, gotta run it through L and D. I gotta ask Kona Lulu. I mean, I get it, there's a procedure, but for minor things like that within the associations, not just P'aku Kalo, but any of the associations that want to use it, something that's established, I think maybe more responsibility could be given to the Maui office so that it's, it's more timely. It's more friendly to us as an association to utilize facilities that belong to us. Um, other than that, the only other thing I wanted to touch on, it's not directly related to P'aku Kalo, but the new homesteads, beautiful homes. I have no problems with it. A six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar home that you need at least multi-generational's to pay that mortgage. Um, my cousin was the first one to get it, Mopuano. Um, but it's her and her son. I love my kids. I love my grandkids. I don't want to live without them. So to have like how this original homestead was, three bedroom, one bath with room for expansion. You could have built two homes for the price of this one six to seven hundred thousand dollar home. You could have put more people on the land. And if they choose to and need to expand in the future, then, you know, it's up to them to do it, but at least get them in there. Get them qualified. And that's all I'm gonna say and I'll turn the rest over to Leana.
Aloha, my kaka. Ova'ua Leana iKarozi, Lani Omoui Sing, Kili iKoa. I am a homesteader there in P'aku Kalo. Sorry, I am virtual today. I just wanted to irrit- I just wanted to let you know that we, P'aku Kalo Hawaiian Homestead, are a community that have grown. I've been in this community over fifty-plus years. I am five. I am a five-generation home, one home. I support the access, um, of Gracie Gomes. I support Janice Herc in regards to re-establishing the area of the armory. I support Jimmy, Uncle Jimmy, for the roads. We need better roads. I live on one of those roads that have not been paved over the many years. I support Alama and, um, watershed. Our vi is important. We should not be paying three hundred dollars a month for water. I, yesterday I testified about that. We should be able to get the water we need in our home associations. I support George Kuala'ao. I support Nate. I support Relan. Relan has done so much great things in our neighborhood and I really, really appreciate all of you. But really, I'm a Hala'ke'a Kua. I'm a Hala'uhiyo Kalani'ana'ole. I'm a Hala'ar Kupuna. Cause without my grandmother getting the first Hawaiian homestead on P'aku Kalo, I would not be with a home today. I was a single mom of four children and thankful to her that she was able to get that lease. Then to my mother, then to me, then to my niece, then to our grandchildren. That's five plus generations in one home. I do not have eggland. I do not have another area. I just know that, I know we can do better. I've gone around to many of your community meetings. I cry with these people that cannot get on their land. Twenty-plus years, thirty-plus years. I am so sad to hear and see our kupuna at seventy and eighty years old getting properties. That is unacceptable. Come on, we need to do better. We can do better. And as I am in this association, I'm a Hala' Relan for so many things that she does on the side. Tia Iwohi, um, Ati Velma Mariano. I mahalo you commissioners. I know it takes time out of your time to come to do all these things. And I know that it can be pushed forward. I thank those that work in our office. They're not always easy to work with, but they do make time and they do help us when we need the help. So mahalo and aloha. I pray you all have a wonderful day and kea kuapu. Mahalo, Relan.
Let me, uh, comment on a couple of things. Uh, and we appreciate all the testimony. Um, I guess, uh, you know, there's different, um, ways to get things done. Uh, obviously the department has limited resources, but we do the best we can. Uh, but we also rely on, uh, the county, we rely on the legislature, uh, we rely on beneficiaries. Uh, we rely on our county, um, representatives. Um, so there's a, you know, you're, a lot of the concerns you folks are talking about are very similar in other homesteads, like repaving, uh, you know, e- expansion of, or getting a house that you're gonna expand. And so, um, also traffic, traffic is a real big thing over here. So the solution is, uh, requires a variety of, uh, entities to be involved. I mean, we don't necessarily, uh, manage the highway portion or the lineup or the roadway out front. So we'd probably have to, uh, work with the DOT. You know, your plastic dividers, as well as maybe expanding the road a little bit to accommodate, uh, I guess you're talking about eternally. Um, that sounds real easy, uh, or, you know, it's just a matter of getting the appropriate people on board. Have them, the engineers take a look at how it's gonna impact the traffic flow. And, uh, you know, with, uh, uh, in some of our, um, homestead communities, they have, uh, speed bumps that slow down the traffic to kind of mitigate the, the danger created by people speeding. Uh, there's also, um, you know, a question as to whether these particular roads are under the purview of the county. Uh, if not, you know, we maybe collectively can go into the legislature. We do have, uh, a maintenance and repair, uh, I guess, item in our budget that we submit um, biannually to, excuse me, um, each, each year regarding different community, uh, I guess, projects we'd label them as regarding repairs, including pa- repaving. And so we can, we can add these to it, uh, but that has to get funded. And a lot of times that requires advocacy, you know, the beneficiaries. You know, like they said, the squeaky wheel gets the grease or oil. And, um, so we will, um, you know, take, uh, the recommendations you folks have submitted and, um, you know, adjust our budget so we can include, um, I don't know if it's too late for this one, but, uh, we definitely can, uh, take a look at that. And, uh, but it is, um, you know, gonna, uh, need your folks' guidance. You know, I, I appreciate, um, you know, things you, uh, in layouts as well as, uh, the proposals regarding specifically how much the costs, like Jimmy Kincaid, he put it, you know, some bids together. So we know how much it is. So we can actually specifically ask for that kind of funding. Similar to what we're doing with all the housing development. We've got twenty-eight housing developments. We're doing first phase, second phase. Uh, the first phase, we're using our six hundred million and then the second phase, um, we, we have a, uh, specific dollar amount. So it's real clear when we go in and we ask, it's how much and what will it accomplish? Similarly, uh, with these suggestions you folks are putting on the table for us to consider, you know, it's great when you provide that kind of information. And so we can, and I'd say it, it really, really is a collective effort, us going in. You can say, well, department do it. But I think if you go to your, uh, council person, your legislators as, as well as us, uh, as well as, um, working with the DOT and the various, uh, entities that make decisions and also approve whatever adjustments you're suggesting, uh, that's the only way to get it done. So today is just one step in the process. It's an ongoing one. You know, we are here to help. We are here to facilitate the improvements you're talking about. Cause this is a continuous thing. Obviously you gotta repave, maybe ten years, we gotta repave again. So, but the situation is very common throughout our homestead community, so. Um, I'm not trying to shine you guys on, but I, I am saying the, the practical reality. And those that have been most successful are those that step up and, you know, kind of push us, but also push the other guys that have, uh, the purse strings as well as the decision makers regarding adjustments and the traffic flow and that. So, um, let's work together. I do like the idea of maybe better using the money we've set aside for the roadwork in, uh, Kahiki Nui. So we're gonna take a look at that, see if we can kind of leverage that and use it more effectively. But again, we do want to work with you guys and that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you. On your way out.
Hello.
Okay, uh, the next testifier, uh, Daniel Ornellis.
Aloha, commissioners. Um, my name is Daniel Ornellis. I'm the secretary treasurer of the Waialu Ko Community Homestead Association. And I kind of wanted to just, um, elevate our conversation, recognizing that you folks are policymakers. Um, so first I wanted to mahalo the commission for approving item F two yesterday. And it's to issue a license agreement to our homestead association uh, for a one acre vacant, uh, lands right behind, uh, Phase Three Association. Um, you know, we're gonna bring it into higher and better use for traditional customary practices such as we have an emu, uh, lined up for that area and just a place for community to gather. We don't have a community park nearby, walking distance. So we want to do some improvements for kupuna that walk around the neighborhood, exercise and, you know, again, place to gather come holiday season and stuff like that. So mahalo Nui for that approval yesterday. In this J agenda item, I just wanted to provide some observations that I have as a beneficiary, my understanding of the evolution of the program, which I'm thrilled about, and, uh, some vision to move forward. And first of all, you know, the, the fact that you guys are here today, this is a big operation. I mean, you got all your staff here, you folks are here. And I believe, you know, that increases your knowledge and understanding of us as beneficiaries on Maui. So I appreciate that. And it leads to more wise decisions, I believe. And the fact that you're just present on space, you know, you, you building a polina, uh, pelina with us as people, but also the land, cause I'm assuming you guys go drive around, go look at different things. So you see firsthand what we talking about. And finally, it really is a respect for us as beneficiaries. Uh, we all know that government is centralized on Oahu, the largest population in our archipelago. And, um, by being here, being present, you're really empowering us, you know, us in the periphery, the neighbor islands, yeah? So again, I appreciate that. And I compare that to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. I work for those guys. And all the meetings are centralized on Oahu. You're lucky you can get in on one Zoom meeting. There really is no connection, uh, connection to the people. And what happens is in decision-making, the board depends on the island representative. And if your island representative is not that strong, I'll wait for that island. Um, so again, I appreciate you guys being here today. So the evolution of the program, um, I, I believe that we are encouraging, or you folks are helping us encourage economic development, not just economic growth. So what's the difference? Growth is just numbers. It's qual- quantitative. You're on the waitlist, you get money for a pay-on mortgage. We're just gonna pump out numbers. And I see the evolution over time that we're more into economic development, where you're combining the qualitative elements of the program with the quantitative. So you still want to get people on the land, but you're really looking at opportunities, the quality of the land, the quality of the people that may help you folks bring the land and program to, um, higher and better use. And your, uh, statement, Chairman Watson, speaks to that in working directly with homesteaders. You know, um, I used to work for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, right when Hoaliko Drake ended her tenure. And that's when the Act fourteen, the sixteen thousand five hundred acre reinvestment into the program for unauthorized public uses of homestead land took place. And it came with a, you know, a big chunk of money. And then under Kali Watson, your, uh, tenure, your first go-around, uh, you supported the planning system, which, uh, was supported by the planning office. And then that evolved into Reynard Soon's, uh, tenure. And then we looked at what we called the Undivided Interest Program. And under, uh, Darryl Yagoditch, who was the planning director, it really was a program that is not how it's being implemented, but I, I see us evolving to what we originally conceived it to be. We, the planning office that I used to work for with, uh, Darryl Yagoditch's leadership. And, uh, you know, we went through some stale times where we had Micah Kane coming in and he really used the Undivided Interest Program to just economic growth, just get leases out, put them in people's hands, so on, so on, so on. And then, you know, Nahalia, Aila, and now we have Kali Watson two point oh. And I believe we're, uh, moving back into a development phase where we're looking at the opportunities of undivided interests. And, um, I wanted to speak to that vision that I have in bringing that undivided interests opportunity to life. And ultimately it's working with beneficiaries and developing criteria so that we look beyond just your, your number on your list and if you get money for a built-on house. It's what can you bring to the table? What can you as a beneficiary do to improve the conditions of yourself, your Hana and your community? That's what really the Undivided Interest Program was all about. And, um, and I can see it happening. You know, we got the Kuli'ana Program, although the department has relegated it to the lands that nobody really wants to challenge, cause it's so hard, like King's Landing, Kahiki Nui as examples. because it's so hard, like King's Landing, Kahiki Nui as examples. You know, we, we really should expand the Kuliana slash Undivided Interest into areas that really have, it's going to be raw land and going to need a lot of coordination, but a lot more opportunity for homesteading purposes. We, you know, we, we could use existing lands, but I love the fact that we're acquiring a lot of lands. You know, we got the Waioa Maoka lands, the land right above, above Spreckles Ditch, all the way up to the mountainside. It's prime lands and Hawaiian Homes is going to be putting a lot of off-site infrastructure. I don't see why we don't just blow out that whole eel and include Hawaiians along that whole area south of Waioa Stream. It's a great opportunity.
Is that the LNR lands?
No, it's private property. But the Maoka portion is all in Conservation District. And I believe the Legacy Land Fund could bring some resources to the table to buy out the legacy land portion. And then maybe, and I'm thinking through the homesteaders that can provide upfront some of that resources to acquire with some agreement that over time we could recoup that cost. It's all about timing and every dowling does it already. He go buy the, the land, then he give it to you guys and we move forward. So it's kind of the same thing, just not doing it as an individual developer, we're doing it as a community. And again, you know, it's going to be those homesteaders that understand and is willing to invest. And so what is the benefit? Well, so you would go like as an example, we buy One Piece land. We identify community use area. Then LMD could do a general lease to this organization. It's almost like a CPR. Land Development Division could work with this organization to do off-site connections like roads and schools and, you know, whatever the connections need to be. And then we could work with nonprofits like the Shaw has the Homestead Community Development Corporation and look for those other resources, advocate at the legislature, work with Indian nations, work with those community development corporations that's focused on, you know, infrastructure improvements at like when crazy one percent interest rate. I think Hawaiians that have the capacity would jump on that. And what is the benefit to the DHHL program? You're expanding the capacity to provide lands for homesteaders, beneficiaries to manage and maintain those lands. And we're not looking to compete with the department's programs that are already scheduled and on its way. It's just adding another opportunity. You know, we're going to reduce the waitlist and we're going to take the Hawaiians that can really out of the mix of undivided interests. Because everybody has different skill sets, you know, it's like the union, you got the unit thirteen, you get unit three, you get unit four. They all have different skill sets, but they all value the employees. So maybe in the homestead program, we have beneficiaries that have a higher level of capacity that can take on more responsibility, more kuliana and not overwhelm the department with everybody. And then finally, what is the benefit to the Hawaiian, to the, the beneficiary? It reduces time on the waitlist. I calculated what my son, who is number three thousand five hundred something on the rez list on Maui. He's going to be sixty to seventy years old before he's even offered something at the pace we moving at. So why don't we look at opportunities where we can gather, you know, our Ohana that can and then bring them in the mix? And why, why would we want to do that with Hawaiian Homes? Because somebody said, yes, go buy private property and do it yourself. It's the economies of scale. It's real hard for individual homesteaders to build a vertical, as an example, what came up last night, to just get, you know, one, one lease or a mortgage is very expensive. So economies of scale could be at the land acquisition level, it could be at the vertical level, it could be at all levels. And not only you reducing time, but hopefully you reducing costs. I love the fact that Hawaiian Homes has land use authority. So maybe we can use like Big Island's rural standards where you have sixteen-foot paved driveway or a road with two-foot grass soils for drainage and just a water line. Because nowadays, everybody can do electric yourself, you can do septic yourself. You don't need all that investment in curbs and gutters and, you know, power lines and all this and that. So it's not for everybody, it's for specific areas that the land allows for it to occur. It is for a specific group of the homesteads that have that capacity and ability to step up and make it happen. And I just wanted to plant that seed as policymakers that we look at those options moving forward. And again, it's economic development, not just growth. Mahalo Nui for your time.
You know, Daniel, you know, you're, you're with DLNR right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. We're actually in the process of trying to, you know, the Act fourteen, I think we're short about five hundred fifty-two acres. So we're, I, I, we've identified some lands, not just DLNR, HCDAA, as well as Hawaii Public Housing Authority, as well as the DOA, which we're going to be transferring and trying to close out that particular act that's, you know, over twenty years old. It's always just kind of been sitting there unfulfilled. But we, we are actually going after more lands above and beyond Act fourteen. And I view it as kind of like a five-year program because there's so many other lands, whether it's previously cultivated sugarcane lands, whether it's ranch lands that, you know, really should be coming. And as, as we all know, when the act was passed, all those lands were excluded. And we were given somewhat marginal lands and in some cases, bad lands. You know, in some of the lava fields, you're looking, oh, that's Hawaiian homeland. You go wine manoa, you look up at the cliffs, oh, that's Hawaiian homelands. And so it's, you know, it's, it's been a situation that I think we were shortchanged historically. But we're trying to change that, not only through Act fourteen, but we have a governor that's very supportive. I think we have a legislature that's very supportive because we have over twenty-nine thousand on our waitlist. So the only way we can get to your son is to acquire lands that we can develop a lot quicker at a less costly expense. And so we are looking at lands. So you, and you know, you made a suggestion on some private lands, which is fine, we can take a look at that. We've actually had developers that have donated lands to us to, I guess, satisfy not only their affordable housing requirements, but also to do some development where they'll pay for everything and then they'll transfer it to us. And, you know, so there's a variety of ways we can get lands. But I am looking at DLNR as, as well as all these other government lands, including county. The county has started to step up. They've given us some lands in Kalahail on Oahu. And so we worked with Lanai, excuse me, the County of Maui to do a development on Lanai adjacent to their lands. And so if you have some suggestions on what other lands that we should move into our inventory, please let us know. I've assigned Riley Kuananakoa, who's a descendant of Prince Kuhio. It's kind of, kind of appropriate, I think, that we use a guy. But we are looking for more lands and we are, we've identified a ton of lands that we are going to attempt. We're going to have to maybe battle for some of it because you got maybe divisions or department heads that all know that's our land. Well, you know, if, if it makes sense, especially if it's adjacent to our land, if it's desirable, where maybe it's zone ag, but it's really in the, you know, in the middle of a residential community where it'd make more sense and a better use for residential, especially for Hawaiian homelands, let us know because we're looking for more lands.
Thank you. Absolutely. And I have three parcels that I could just off the top of my head explain. So the areas between Puleho Nui and the drag strip is a two-hundred-acre parcel, DLNR vacant unencumbered lands. I think would be ideal for a quick transfer. The question to me would be, would it be a set aside or you need fee title? You probably need fee title.
Got a fee title, fee title, or it's a jurisdictional transfer.
Would happen beyond Act fourteen. And then of course, Upper Honokouai, Honokouai goes up to Honokohau ditch as the upper perimeter. But there's another hundred fifty acres right above it. You might as well do that whole corridor because DWS already put in water lines up Maoka. So the water's there. And then the third one, in my understanding, Waikia Properties in Hana. There's areas near the Hana High School, probably another couple hundred acres. I don't know what the quality of the land is, to be honest, but it's something to look into.
Yeah, we're not looking just for residential, you know, we are looking for possible ag lands, pastoral lands, especially the ranch lands on a big island. We are grabbing some commercial lands, like in Hilo, there's a parcel adjacent next to the airport that we have, which the DOT has, so they're going to transfer, or DLNR has, and they're going to transfer that. So it's not limited to just homesteading. We want lands that can help move the program, especially in the area of income production too.
Right.
So, okay, thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person, Jade Aloha Lani Smith.
All right. Aloha Kakul, commissioners, Chair Watson and the Lahui. Boy, we got some hammers. I am so proud of our people. I want to go ahead and share my presentation. Go ahead. Okay. All right. So thank you for this time, this opportunity. I'm going to share with you folks, finance with a purpose. Purpose to align financial activities with a specific goal for beneficiaries, life's values, building generational wealth in the Hawaiian homelands communities. So the creation of Waqiu CDC was due to witnessing the East Maui people fighting one another for the right to own a home in Waqiu. But on the other hand, others did, they didn't want it. They did not want anything to do with Hawaiian homes in Hana. But the problem I saw was the fear. The fear was the influx of outsiders negatively impacting the town's infrastructure, the resources, job security and new homes to be built. But the core problem for Hana is that there is an overcrowding living condition going on in the homes as we speak. Like Leif Singh had brought four to five generations in them. And they truly needed homes, but could not compete with the DHHL waitlisters. So moved with concern, like our Prince Kuhio, hard work and planning took place to create an exclusive way to receive an award for just those in East Maui by providing lineal descent to be awarded a home as a priority. But it took a team of partners, yeah? Took the beneficiaries, DHHL, G seventy and the community to create a successful master plan. And I mahalo everybody for that, but that's half the battle, right? Now comes the time to afford and be financially prepared for a long-term mortgage, which we know it's pretty expensive. Just to kind of give you guys an update, recently, this past summer, July, we did the Kani Ko'ola' Leah event. And we were very successful in getting the list for future applicants on the east end, especially in Kani. And we had them sign up for our Waqiu CDC application drive and genealogy workshop that we had in August. Then, when it came, our application drive and genealogy workshop, it was on a Saturday and a Sunday, August sixteenth and seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. And we had a mix. So we had not only the application drive because we had so much engagement. We also went into the map of Waqiu and we introduced the DHHL's new portal so that they, they can get on their own portal, yeah? And so sixty were in attendance. So as the founder of Waqiu Community Development Corporation, I have positioned myself separate from the corporation to continue serving our Hawaiian homes beneficiary base on an economic and financial level in serving our mission statement of number five, of five, which states to provide assistance for economic and business training to utilize homesteads for financial sustainability. Our mission statement is kind of long, so if you guys want to see it, you guys can visit our website at waquiu.org. So Prince Kuhio, he's seen his people being landless, dying due to disease at the time, having intermarriages and loss of lands that moved him to create and establish a land trust to further perpetuate and rehabilitate the native Hawaiians. His vision was for his people to be self-sufficient on a foundation to build a future. But today's scenario, his people are moving off the islands due to inflation, homelessness, violence and drug abuse, job loss, loss of land, in debt, no longer can afford health care, and the list goes on. Yet mahalo for Kuhio's foresight for a trust in preserving the native Hawaiians in Hawaii. Now, did our Prince Kuhio have insurance? No, because insurance did not exist in the same form during Prince Kuhio's lifetime. But I found this interesting that one of Prince Kuhio's roles was funding infrastructure, which he was instrumental in a twenty-seven million dollar appropriation. Back then, that was huge. But to establish the harbors in Hilo, Honolulu, the lighthouses, improvements of Pearl Harbor and establishing the county system that is still in existence today, an amazing man. But could it be that he was thinking about the financial sustainability for each of his people? Yes, he wanted to protect Hawaiians and put them into economically sustainable solutions. But he did not envision the great financial stress we are facing today. So why aren't we teaching financial solutions people on how to revitalize and hold on to our heritage, our lifestyles, our homes? How can we hope, have or give hope to our people? I'm going to share some history here. How did the Rockefellers preserve their legacy to be the richest family? They used permanent life insurance as a key strategy to preserve and transfer their wealth across generations. This method known as the Rockefeller method or the Rockefeller strategy involves using life insurance policies within an irrevocable trusts to grow wealth tax efficiently, avoid estate taxes and provide liquidity for the family. Another one is Walt Disney. He took his life insurance to fund the development of Disneyland. Facing rejection from the banks, he borrowed against the cash value of his life, whole life insurance policy to pay employees and cover early design expenses for the park. This allowed him to retain control of his vision without giving up equity to traditional lenders. Smart buggers. So our financial solutions, here are some opportunities. But I want to bring out that insurance today is much more modernized and has added value for living benefits rather than just a death benefit. And within it is the power of compound interest, yeah? It's, it's ability to grow wealth exponentially, excuse me, over time. And like Albert Einstein shares, he who understands it earns it, he who doesn't pays it. So here are some of the items that, oops, excuse me, go back. Back, yeah. And so here are the items like estate trusts for securing wealth and legacy, debt elimination, annuity, a process that provides income, cash value, our financial entrepreneurship program we have supports our mercantile opportunity, businesses, giving them assurance for protection and tax-free retirement plans. This is huge, you guys, because in the next ten years, where would I taxes be, right? So personally, I want to give a shout out to our state representative, Mahina Poipoi, because she took the time to sit down with me and understand my personal vision to assist in this capacity of providing financial education, debt elimination and entrepreneurship as leverage in our financial stress today. And she gave me direction and encouragement that we need more of this type of education for finances. And so I am now a vendor on the state's list. Excuse me. So what I've done through her encouragement was create future financial workshops. So the creation of an educational financial workshop with Exertis Financial Partners has just begun. Our first one was started in Hana at Ala Kukui on Saturday, October eleventh. And I am committed for the next ten years to serve in this capacity as my primary vision because after ten years, I think the taxes might go up, I don't know. But my ask today is to become a service provider to our people, giving them direction in their financial future for building generational wealth and legacies for our future. And I just want to say with, with going out to the event, my question to all these that I spoke with is how they're going to afford their mortgages? And they don't know, sorry. They don't know. And that touched my heart and I was like, I got to teach them some of these principles. But that encouraged me to do what we're doing. And it was such a successful workshop with all these that attended. And I just want to say mahalo, but this ends my presentation. And I want to say I have a team behind me and locally, we have an office here in Kahului, Maui. So it's not just, you know, having somebody come here, do it, and then they disappear into the mainland. So thank you for your guys' time. I appreciate it. And mahalo. Have a good day, everybody.
Okay, thank you. You too. Let's see. Oh, Kapua, Kili Koa Kamai. Oh, Kapua, Kili Koa Kamai.
Mahalo. Mahalo Jade for this, uh, presentation. Um, I'd like to know if you'll do Zoom for other islands associations like Y and I. Uh, we'd like to book that. Um, but then also, I'd like to encourage our commissioners to support her offering. Because we've had past, um, financial assistance. But that was to get into the homes, to save the homes. This here is something for us all, not just those in that dire need of being uh, either housed or unhoused. But for us to stay housed and to help each other get housed and meet all of our needs. So I highly encourage our commissioners to take her workshop, their workshop, because like she said, she's not a body of one. She does have partners, because we know that it's working together. That helps to make us more successful. So, again, mahalo Nui, Jade, and team. And I encourage the commissioners to support our entrepreneurial beneficiaries like Jade. Mahalo.
Thank you. Let's see, uh, J7, Noilani Kaneko.
Aloha and good morning, um, Noilani Kaneko. I originally, uh, grew up in Honocohau Valley, Maui. And, um, I'm also a descendant of Auntie Edith McKenzie. I am also a proud owner of our new Pu'ohana, uh, homestead and, um, sorry, I did share some slides, but it's okay. So I'm just here to share some mana'o and the things that we, for Pu'ohana, um, some of the, don't get me wrong, I love my house. My kids are very blessed. Um, there are some challenges that our families shared, um, and they did kind of share some mana'o and some solutions that could possibly help us through the process, because we do have a lot more families coming on board. Um, some of the challenges was, uh, long wait times between the names being called, lease signings. Um, some of the solutions shared also is to add more tables, uh, consider appointment times maybe to help, um, the wait times for a lot of the lenders, the signing. Um, other ones was ambiguous ranking system. No one understood how they got their rank number and were unclear on how their waitlist number was used or not. Uh, some of the solutions was to share the internal ranking system used by DHHL to award lots. Um, I don't know if you saw during the pool, like everybody's looking at, what's your number? How'd you get that number? When'd you put in your application? So everybody talk story and try to figure out, um, what, what's happening. Uh, communicating process if not awarded in phase one, which I think we're, um, doing, continue to communicate the process for families who are not awarded, um, lots in phase one. So they were unclear on how to prepare for phase two and phase three. Um, I know a lot of families are still, they talk amongst each other to share information of how to prepare for the next phases. Some of the other challenges for us new ones that, uh, we just got into the homes and there are still some homes that are still vacant, um, unknown wait times for their move-in date. So I know we moved from, we originally March, then we moved to April, May, June. You know, so that must keep going, which is, it's understandable. And I think some families that moved from the mainland coming back had to find temporary housing till their house was completed. So which created more expenses unfortunately for those families. Let's see, al- also, some of the things that we are actually working with are, um, Millie, who is our super awesome, we are learning a lot of the challenges on our new homes. You know, things that are not being completed properly, but, um, speaking with Kalani Branda, I think, uh, we can work together in, uh, finding solutions to make sure our homes are taken care of and properly, um, put together. Um, I know the word on the street is like it's Hawaiian homes. They're just gonna slap it together, but we don't want that perception. We want, we have, I have a beautiful house, so I'm very appreciative. But we want to make sure that they see Hawaiian homes. It's like Kapalua, you know? It is beautiful. That's the perception we want. We don't want them to see Hawaiian homes as, ah, they got the low end of things, you know? So that's how we want to create. So our job, uh, we at Pu'ohana want to create a, a bridge with Hawaiian homes to make sure the next transition kind of gets better as, as we go along. Um, another one that we had issues with, and I know everyone's talking about infrastructure roads. So right now, because our, our main entrance is blocked off because it's still construction, um, the road only allows you, if you're coming from Lahaina, you cannot turn into the residence. You have to go around and still make another illegal turn somewhere to get back home. Um, also, to, uh, leave Pu'ohana, you can only turn to Lahaina. You cannot turn left. So, because the other, uh, entrance is also closed. So knowing that we have phase two and phase three coming, that road will not sustain, uh, our residents will have a lot more, because our street alone is already struggling to turn. They, we already had an accident there, one of the kupunas, um, unfortunately, uh, last week got hit on the road. That road, uh, is super busy. It's very, um, it's hard to pull out either way. So just kind of keep in mind that, um, I know Kali talked about that it's not only us to advocate, but we can also talk to the county to let them know our issues too. So, uh, we will touch upon that, but we wanted to share that's something, uh, we, we would like to push, um, to make sure it's safer for our residents now and our new residents that are coming. Our roads, I mean, I know we got Wa'e'u coming up, Wa'e'u is one way in, one way out. So it's gonna be a total bottleneck on our, our, our roads, but just to keep in mind. Um, sorry about the slide. We can go to the last slide. Um, right now, uh, we are talking about, uh, Native Hawaiian, uh, Native American Housing Assistant Nahaza. Love Nahaza. I am very fortunate recipient of Nahaza and if, without that, I would not have been able to own my home. Um, and I know several other of us talked about the homes being too big. Um, my kids are very happy. I have three and they all have their own room, which they never had. So I understand the pros and cons of smaller homes, bigger homes for each family. Everyone's different. And the cost is different and I, I understand. Um, but I would like to advocate Nahaza. Uh, Annie is super awesome. We have great staff, but we would like to advocate that they need more staff to help get these funds utilized for our people. How do we speak up for them and, um, the Nahaza funding, how the money is being spent, if we spent it all this year? Also, uh, Nahaza, when we first phased one, we looked at our lender list. Nahaza was at the bottom. And unfortunately, CPB, all the head banks were at the top. Nobody, when I talked to, nobody knew about Nahaza because they never scrolled all the way to the bottom of the list. And I wanted to know if we could put our nonprofit that are for the people at the top of our lender list. Unfortunately, a lot of people didn't scroll to the bottom of the list. Uh, but yes, so they always thought only got CPB, only got American Savings. For me, I've worked for a bank like that and they're not for the people. They're, they're about making money. Nahaza is for our people and I would like to see more of our nonprofits at the top of our lending list to help our people see that first. Um, and I think that's it. We have a homeowner association actually that got, um, taken out, but we are working, uh, to get, uh, association like Pakukalo and all the other Hawaiian homes just to come help and facilitate. But mahalo, thank you for your time and I appreciate it and we love our homes. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next testifier, Donna Sterling.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, hi, everybody. Um, my name is Donna Sterling. I'm a twenty-four-year resident. And, um, thank you, Kali Chan, Chair and the Commissioners for, um, this J Agenda, um, free speech. I am here to mahalo certain people to recap the fire that happened on June 15th. And, um, also to share a program that we're gonna start here for our homesteaders called Wellness Initiative. Um, I want to thank Elama Farm, who has really stepped up as President of Kahuan O'Kahiki Nui. With the, um, new old and reactivate the projects that we have, we started with maybe thirty years ago. But thank you, Elama. And Andrea, it's good to see you back as reforestation. Cherry, I want to thank also your new generation PowerPoint. Yesterday I saw Lilia and Elijah. Because of their testimony, because of their PowerPoint, I don't need to call for small bits of information anymore. It's, it's in there. They, they answered the question on vacant lots and other informational, um, stuff. It's really, really good. Um, I'm here to speak as a homesteader, not as a, a representative of any entity or organization. So with that being said, um, Gwen from Citar, she said the kupuna up here. She didn't say my name and it's okay. But I was a recipient of her, uh, visit twice. And I got to grow watercress in my, my hydroponics. I now can grow watercress and beans and I don't have to go out frequently to get vegetables. I just need the meat. So, um, thank you very much, Gwen. It's such a good program. Um, I want to also thank, uh, Diamond, uh, your public relations, um, information lady. Uh, she encouraged me to testify after the fire of six fifteen this year. E'Kahiki Nui. Um, we wanted to recap, some of, some of us here want to recap how we can, um, improve the fire, what happened. But this is just as good and, um, I will say that the impact of the fire on our road out of here, Elama brought it up and he's traveled on it. Uh, we now have one way to get out. My son and I on a, um, grass weed-whacked shortcut to the cement road. Um, otherwise I made another road in the burn area. And that's because of my skills at Kahualave, but, um, we get out, we come back in the long way, that road you can't go up. So, you know, for me, um, I'm gonna put priority into, um, reaching out to our homesteaders that surround my property. And they're impacted by the, um, the fire hazard not getting out if there's a fire. So I'm gonna reach out to them by cellphone and see if we can get meetings held here in our neighborhood so we can get what's impacting them. And that's how I'm gonna get my, um, our people to, to jump in as manpower. Um, I will say this at, uh, after the fire, then after I spoke to the Commissioners and Chair, the governor appointed a, a Hawaii State Fire Marshal, uh, Dory Dorothy Booth. And so I made a, uh, three hours, I made a, a search for, through the governor's email. And I finally got a email where I could address the, the marshal. However, she was getting her staff hired, appointed. And so yesterday, the day before, she responded to me with a, a contact number, email, and what she would like to do for our community. So, you know, I'm, I'm the point of contact. Um, I will bring it to, um, our community and to, um, firewise. Um, and I will bring it to, uh, Kuk and Kahuan O'Kahiki Nui. And, um, let's see what they have to, to offer, um, communities in the rural areas. Um, I'm really excited about, uh, the marshal and her seven people on the staff. I am a, a member of, I was asked to join Mima, um, when the fire or any disaster comes through. A retired, um, fire personnel Gale in Hana. And, um, I do report to him and Mima on any issues that we need to report and I can teach our community to, um, do the same, um, and I can, you know, we'll have a fire meeting. Um, let's see. Um, I think, I just want to comment on, um, uh, uh, I'm part of the, um, Pacific Energy Drought Resistance, um, here. This is with the drought, with the weather meteorologists, um, Seaworm. We do external studies for water and impact. And just to let you know, Kahiki Nui, according to Seaworm, has one of the great, highest aquifer in Kahiki Nui. So that needs to be explored. Um, a little bit of fact from the fire, um, I work for Awahui Wind. And the water we drew for that fire came from Awahui Wind. They're on a private well, um, not county. So the water that we drew for that fire was, um, about a hundred thousand gallons for the fire. Plus or minus. Um, with that being said, um, I know some of you have heard that I was granted a really good privilege from the chair, I mean, the Fire Department Chief Ventura, to, um, have a Kenwood radio, which means I can listen to Maui Fire Department. I can listen to Awahui Wind, um, which is our base camp for fire. And I can, um, listen to, I can commute with, communicate with others that have this, this handheld. I gave one of these to Aloha Smith and Kaul Pole a year ago, two years ago. And recently they had a fire. I think she, she shared it at the mayor's, uh, meeting, looking for community input for CIP for budget. She shared it with the mayor and, um, there was an injury, third-degree burn, structure fire, limited water. And, um, Gale and I were invited to be a part of this handful of people in Kaul Pole. Uh, so, the bottom line is, um, we asked that we're identify your water source, number one. Number two, reach out to community schools. And they are in that process right now. So, you know, I wish them well, um, and the meters. But that's the kind of stuff we do with fire. We're, we're good with, with our neighbors. Um, and on the, the Wellness Initiative Homestead, uh, we have these devices that are new, part of the new technology while we're waiting for the med beds, which is coming down soon. Um, they are electromagnetic frequencies, uh, by this company. And it's a device and, um, it seems to, to help, um, major medical conditions um, throughout the body and, um, pain, um, joint ache, circulation, vascular. So we're, we're trying it. We tried it here, a couple, three, four people. But we're going to explore getting our homesteaders, uh, into a healthier, um, environment by wellness and explore these new devices that are coming down. I think that's it, Chair. Uh, oh, we have a Mezonet, um, we have a Mezonet weather station behind my house and up at Lot 91. Uh, Dr. Tom Giabaluca came up with his colleagues and, um, fixed my machine and ninety-one's. And now the data that is, um, downloaded, you can look, um, online through Mezonet or Hawaii Pacific Weather. Um, and we're, look for Kahiki Nui. And you know, I hope, Elama, we can get more board meetings, um, like monthly or quarterly. Now that you, you popped all those projects up, we're gonna have to educate our, uh, community on, on the projects. But I'm willing to, um, align a buddy up with you and Andrea to assist. That's it. Mahalo. Have a great, great day. Thank you. I'll be up next month too, on the J Agenda. This is the best platform to get the word out, both public and with the Commissioners, so you're on board with, um, our Kahiki Nui. Thank you.
Right, uh, thank you, Donna. Okay, the next testifier, Robin Newhouse. Kilkia, Hawaiian Homes Community.
Aloha Chair, aloha Commissioners, aloha. Well, since we're on the topic of water, yes, our non-potable water line that got stopped at Na'ali Road. From yesterday's testimonies from everyone and your department, project leads are on point. I was amazed at how they did their presentation and stuff. So I would just like to say, can somebody do the project of getting back? That non-potable water line, move, move ahead? Because my husband's been gone, this will be fourteen years. He was one of the heads that got it to Na'ali and then it stopped due to funding. I'm hearing all of these things coming around saying, we got money for that. But until I see it, it's just talk for me. I just feel, my heart has always been homestead. I grew up here in Paku Kalo. And now I live in Keokea, which is like I was born and raised there also. I've been there since nineteen ninety-four on the accelerated lease. And went in front of the commission back then in the eighties to allow us to acquire the land on our own, to our own water. That's pretty much what we needed was water because you can live off grid. My husband is very, very smart at that time. So we asked the neighbors if we could tap into their water line. And that brought down the water down to our lots where we put it up in tanks for us to have fire control, insurance, and we built our homes from then, lived off grid until the subdivision was done in two thousand and eight. So ninety-four to two thousand and eight. So now we have a divided interest is also a paper project. And then now we have all the other ones that just popped up, which are called projects. So if they are given the opportunity to go ahead and do what we did, pretty sure it can be done. I'm living proof. I've been there thirty-two years. And I, I'm just thinking about the next generation of beneficiaries. And how just water alone is our key source because we have the sun. That's a given. And I just want to make sure that having that non-potable water line going there will make the agricultural department at our level become an agricultural homestead. Because right now we're working on six hundred gallons a day of potable water. Anything over that, our price ranges go up. So we're on drip systems, aquaponics with Malama Kum Gwen from Sitar. She has taught us different ways of doing things with just one level of water. In a, in a two weeks, you or two, four, four weeks, you get a full table of vegetables. And you don't have to do any more watering. So the proper uses of how you do things, the steps to do things is crucial, especially right now. Not having the sources to do what we need to do. I would also like to say, Keiki Nui, my ka'i, I support their project. That was my ka'i. Well done, Emalo. I also support Paku Kalo Homestead. I am also a native Paku Kalo homesteader. But just being Hawaiian as a lessie beneficiary. When we think about the wells, that's, that's in the process. We know it's going to get in the process lead done. Find a way where we can have a source where non-potable water can be stored in the area for agricultural to keep going that way instead of using county lines where people are going to tap into. We have our own lines to our own homestead. Just saying, to use the resources right there to benefit both sides, up, down, however it's done. Because it'll only benefit us, the future and the future of the future. Just putting it out there. And I thank you for your time yesterday. It's been a long time since I've been in meetings like this and I literally stayed the whole day to listen to everything. And yeah, I was just absorbed. But since I've been retired now, I feel like I'm going to be seeing you more often. Just to, just to let you know, Hawaiians have so much heart. But when there's things that have mattered, we have to come out and speak our mind. And I'm trying not to get upset about anything and trying to make it just pono. Because I'm not about kicking somebody off of their land because they're not going to live there. That wasn't the issue. Just, just saying. Mahalo for your time and thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Any questions? No?
Thank you. Okay, the next testifier, let's see what comments. Okay, Robin, Eli Noho Moku. Oh, you look familiar. Hello.
I know it's lunchtime. You can smell that stew back there. Aloha Chair, aloha everyone. Thank you for being here and taking time out of your busy day. I acknowledge our kupuna who have come before us. And our kupuna were very astute. And in our melee that we hear so much today and in our moolelo, we could see the ike of our kupuna. The mele's and also our state motto, which is, my speech today really is more introspective. It's not about, you know, saying that what we, you know, how can DHHL be accountable? But in our state motto, uama o ke'e o ka'aina ika pono, that alone should resonate in all of us in the work that, that we see happening or that should be done with, with the department. And that, we all know this, very familiar motto. That the life of the land is perpetuated through righteousness. Meaning that we need to be accountable and pono in the work that we do. Because if we are not, one day our lands will disappear. I mahalo for all the speakers who have come before us. Amazing thoughts and amazing topics. All of it that is very relevant to why we are here, why you folks are here. And I mahalo all of them. I am the president of the Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association. We submitted a write of entry back in November of two thousand and twenty-four. And my ask is, can we set up a consultation meeting with land management to discuss the details of the ROE? Or where are we with it? I know it's not an easy thing to, to just, you know, give out a write of entry, but I'd like to start a conversation about it. And I will close with a very famous melee written by Ellen Prendergast. And my kupuna, Lydia Hale, spoke about this and you can check her out on Instagram. Grandma is gone now. She passed away in two thousand and three. And she talks about this one verse in that melee. It's the, the fourth verse saying, a ole ma'ko ikapohaku, ika pu'u kala o ke'alpuni. U alava ma'ko ikapohaku, ika ai kamaha'o o ka'aina. And what that means is that we do not value the government sums of money. And that we are satisfied with the stones, the astonishing food of the land. And for our Hawaiian people, stones are very meaningful. As Kanaka, we understand that, yeah, we can live off stones. If you're not from this aina, you would be baffled in that concept of what that could mean. But as, as kupa aina is kama aina of this place, we understand the importance. And so that's what I wanted to share with you today. I mahalo you for everything that you folks do to be here with us. And I yield my time to Carol Lee Kamikona.
Aloha no'okeino o Carol Lee Kamikona. As a disclaimer, I want to preface my testimony by saying, my testimony is based on conversations and discussions with beneficiaries who have been engaged in this DHHL process for many years. I am just now returning after a hiatus to advocate again for our beneficiaries however I can. Also nice to see some of you at the Hawaiian Council in Tulalip. So I hope you all enjoyed yourselves because I did enjoy the conference that you had and the workshop, breakout workshop you had. So no'au maka halu'i, mahalu'i. Mahalo no'ke'iava manava, ame ke'iava leva, no'ala'ila. O vau kapeli kikena o Kamalani Homestead Association makulakai. As peli kikena, I wanted to bring forward some of our concerns. One, in November two thousand and twenty-four, a site visit was had of the proposed Kamalani project. In my discussions with some beneficiaries who were present at that site visit, there was no beneficiary consultation had regarding purchase of said aina. However, my understanding, that same group collectively pushed back on that purchase. How and when then did the purchase happen if Maui beneficiaries were against it to begin with? Speaking of purchase, I understand a former employee of the previous owner possibly facilitated with this purchase as an employee of this department. Curiosity asks, is there a connection? Number three, the physical location of the Kamalani project is bordered by Waikoa Gulch to the north. On the other side of the gulch is Monsanto. During rainfall, this gulch floods South Kihei Road by the ABC, Ulalani's and the Kihei Canoe Club. Number four, as far back as March of two thousand and thirteen, Monsanto knew it was storing and illegally spraying the pesticide PenCap M at its Ma'alaya and Pe'ilani sites. Pursuant to an agreement with the government, Monsanto agreed to pay a six million dollar criminal fine and a four million dollar in community service payments to Hawaiian government entities. This was a result of the environmental agency investigation. This is my citation. Number five, in October of two thousand and nineteen, two families sued Monsanto over birth defects. Through skin absorption and chemical inhalation, one pregnant mom's child spent the first nine months of her life in a hospital on Oahu. The infant developed tracheoesophageal fistula, esophageal atresia, in which her throat was not connected to her stomach at birth. Her vocal cords are paralyzed and is required to use a tracheotomy tube for breathing. The other infant was born with an improperly formed tube between his kidney and his bladder, which caused limited kidney function. An outcome is still pending. This is my citation. Number six, in December of two thousand and twenty-one, Monsanto pleaded guilty to thirty environmental crimes in Hawaii relating to pesticide use violations and endangering field workers. Monsanto agreed to pay a twelve million dollar fine. This time, bringing a total of twenty-two million dollars in criminal fines and community service payments since two thousand and nineteen. Monsanto did not maintain compliance of its two thousand and nineteen agreement. In two thousand and twenty, another incident occurred and Monsanto ranked up another thirty misdemeanor charges. This is that citation. Number seven, as current as November of last year, beneficiary and commissioner testified as to the environmental and health concerns, citing decades of chemical contamination and cultural risks. Was adequate testing done? What are the safeguards to beneficiaries' health should this project move forward in the long term? These are the citations. Number eight, with the potential of four hundred homestead lots next to Monsanto, who cares only of its bottom line with no regard for its workers, our residents, or human life? Does this commission want that liability or legacy? I implore this commission to put its beneficiaries first and listen and hear the concerns of those living on the island to which your decisions affect. Mahalo.
I'm wondering if we could get copies of those articles. Because I would like to take a look at, you know, the, what has happened in the past and, you know, what the steps were taken. Obviously, we are concerned, I'm concerned about whether there's any residual bad situation that we're dealing with before we're going to move forward with the development. So if you don't mind, if we could get copies of that, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Any, any questions, commissioners? If not, thank you very.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Okay, the next one, Danielle Maderis, Hiva Hiva, Kahia Ku. Yeah, this is going to be the last testifier before lunch. Anyway, I have a contested case during, during lunch. Okay, thank you. We can hear you.
Okay. Eko'oha na komaha na nui o Daniel Kahawai. I'm here to bring light to matters in our case, docket number two zero two five zero one four zero five dash SI dash O. Behind this docket number is a family that has lived their kuliana for four generations. My name is Hiva Hiva Kahia Ku, Rodeo Nurse, and I am the Ohana representative appearing on behalf of petitioner Denial Maderis and her Ohana. Yesterday, we filed a reply to DHHL's memorandum in opposition to our motion for consideration. First, I wanted to confirm that the commissioners did receive our filing.
Hiva. They not, but they have your original filing which spurred the reconsideration request. So they will get it before they deliberate during lunch.
Okay, thank you. I did want to inform you that last week our Ohana was preparing for the funeral of Denial Akili's eldest son. And so our Ohana was very busy attending and supporting them. And his funeral was held this Saturday and Sunday. And so as soon as we were able to, we did file our reply. And I hope that due to the circumstances that the commissioners do also accept and consider our reply for their hearing today. Our reply is specifically a reply to DHHL's memorandum for opposition. Okay. Our, our reply addresses the central procedural defects in this matter. The hearing officers' report and recommendation order of dismissal was never served upon petitioners as required by HAR Rule ten dash five dash forty-one C. Due to the lack of service and notice, the recommendation should be stricken from the record. When petitioners ultimately received a partial copy of the report attached as Exhibit A to the amended report and order of dismissal on September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, it was incomplete and missing all referenced Exhibits A through F. Because the record was incomplete and the commission's order was issued without full notice and service, the dismissal and report is procedurally defective and must be vacated in its entirety. Therefore, our contested case hearing should be reopened before the full board of commissioners to allow petitioners a fair opportunity to present our case as required by law. The department holds beneficiaries to high standards, demanding perfect compliance with procedures. The department holds beneficiaries to high standards, demanding perfect compliance with procedures, while it fails to uphold the most basic duties of notice, service, and transparency. As stated in our reply we filed, I do want to clarify that prior to the amended dismissal, I sent an email on September fifth, twenty twenty-five, at four forty-six P M to department staff informing department that I noticed the dismissal refers to a Hearing Officer's recommendation, which our Ohana never received. And as we have ten days to reply, I did request a full copy of Hearing Officer's report and recommended order, including any exhibits or attachments. I also requested any documents, staff's medals, meeting minutes, or minutes the commission relied upon, and confirmation when and how we did receive that recommended or served or where we ever served the recommendation by the Hearing Officer. The department staff acknowledged the error and retold the filing date. The amended report and order of dismissal later received on September eighth, twenty twenty-five, again, as I've said earlier, omitted all reference exhibits, leaving petitioner to prepare her motion for reconsideration based solely on an incomplete record. Your department refers to H A R rules. This whole time I was relying on Department of Hawaiian Homes handbook and the Act. These rules had better help me understand the procedures for hearings, and it has come to my attention that DHHL's opposition relies on emails, correspondence, transcripts, and exhibits that was never attached to the amended report or order of dismissal or the Exhibit A, the Hearing Officer's June second, twenty twenty-five, report or served upon petitioner. The commission cannot rely on evidence outside the record that was not served to all parties. Such reliance violates H A R Rules ten dash five dash thirty-nine through ten dash five dash forty-one and fundamental fairness and the fundamental fairness and must be stricken. For nearly twenty-eight years, the department has knowingly neglected its fiduciary duties as trustees under the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, harassing, destabilizing, and re-traumatizing this Ohana, its beneficiaries, violating the standard of care required by law, and weaponizing procedural technicalities to conceal its own breaches. In doing so, the department has acted contrary to the very purpose of the trust to protect and house Hawaiian beneficiaries. And instead, it displaced kupunas from their lawful family home, a homestead to which they invested the prime... Mom, I'm testifying right now. Sorry. I'm sorry, it's homestead into which they invested their prime years of their life, labor, and resources, thereby perpetuating the very conditions of houselessness and instability that the trust was created to prevent. H A R Rule ten dash two dash nineteen expressly defined the fiduciary duties of the commissioners as trustees. These obligations extend by law to all department employees who act as agents of the commission. A beneficiary under the Act is not limited to active leases but include all who have applied, qualified, and/or are descendants entitled to succeed or put in a claim to a homestead. The Maderas Ohana, in good faith and in reliance of their equitable interests and familial connection to their home, continue to reply, defend their interests, and remain open to communication for over three decades. They maintain their family home, paid utilities, cared for the aina, as shown in my previous testimonies and slideshows, and sought resolution even as the department ignores their letters, delayed responses, and reversed prior assurances. This double standard erodes the integrity of the trust. The state cannot lawfully penalize the beneficiaries for technical errors while excusing its own. The fiduciary standards requires the trustees to bear the higher burden of diligence and care, not the beneficiaries. These kupunas should be spending their time surrounded by grandchildren, not left houseless, fighting for their lives and to be restored to their home. They suffer with health issues, suffered from strokes, and the added stress of fear, especially after years of hoping for the best and being let down, has taken an enormous emotional and physical toll, including the loss of their son, who was also left houseless due to his mental health and reliance on the housing and support of his parents. The trauma of displacement and houselessness, especially for kupuna on fixed incomes, is one of the greatest tragedies of our society. When the department staff oppose beneficiaries, instead of supporting them, they violate that duty. Every DHHL employee and every department representative carries the same kuliana as this commission. Even more tragic is that the trust created to house Hawaiians has become the very system displacing them. Instead of practicing ho'oponopono, the department too often chooses opposition, treating beneficiaries as adversaries, as if their lives, investments, and stories are unworthy of the commission's attention and resolution. This commission's purpose is not to protect the institution, but to first protect the people. As informed before, Denell, her husband, children are beneficiaries on the list, their home raised four generations. There are so many beautiful points of supporting this Ohana to take on a familial home that they have openly resided and invested in over three decades. I wish the commission would focus on all the good that they do. Additional information regarding our filing, Denell's father signed his lease in nineteen seventy and sold his home in nineteen ninety-four, over eighteen years later. For nearly two decades, the department held Maderas Ohana to the rules that he had gotten, that he had to get prior approval from the department before selling his house. And unreasonable procedure standards while itself repeated its own violation, breaking promises, and disregarding its fiduciary duties. The department cannot lawfully penalize beneficiaries as human, for human or technical errors, while it continues to disregard the very rules designed to protect their rights. Such misuse of administrative technicalities against self-represented beneficiaries, many of whom are kupuna, as in our situation, perpetuate displacement, houselessness, and trauma instead of fulfilling the trust's rehabilitative purpose. Moreover, any fair interpretation of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act must honor its cultural and constitutional purpose to rehabilitate and restore Hawaiians through reconnection to aina, Ohana, and kuliana. The crown and government lands placed in the trust were intended to provide homes for families to restore self-sufficiency and perpetuate culture, spiritual, and educational practice for future generations. Administrative technicalities cannot be used to defeat this higher purpose. To disregard this foundation is to violate both the letter and the spirit of the trust. This reason, cases involving long-term beneficiaries should be viewed in the best light of beneficiaries' good efforts, not through a punitive lens that result in the displacement from homes that they have sacrificed a lifetime to protect. This commission's purpose is not to protect just the institution again, but the people. Okay, for background, according to our reply, it was stated that we had been given a full opportunity to have a contested case and that our family decided, well, declined that offer. But I do wanna point out that our family has been affected by multiple promises and breaking of those promises that led up to that distrust in the process. So prior to our contested case hearing with Hearing Officer Kaupu, our Ohana has faced many broken promises that has caused us to lose trust in the DHHL staff and the process. December sixteenth, at approximately eight P M, we were promised the lease due to Denell's purchase agreement with her father and her ten thousand dollars paid to the purchase of the home between nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-six. In December twenty twenty-four, we had a meeting with Chairman Kali Watson, Richard Hope, and Juan Garcia, Chairman Kali, the administration, oh yeah, and Juan Garcia's service administration for DHHL. Kali Watson informed Juan Garcia to provide us a complete file containing all materials that the commission would review, and Jeremy Canesso Bontanolino would deliver it to us. And we were promised the opportunity to have a contested case hearing that would be held on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Despite the assurance, the file was never provided. The department's Homestead Service Coordinator, Juan Garcia, acted contrary to his fiduciary obligations and directives of DHHL's leadership. Instead of assisting petitioners as instructed, Juan submitted a request to deny petitioners' hearing directly contradicting assurance previously made by Kali Watson and senior officials. Petitioners and our Ohana relied on these promises, we gathered witness, paid for the flights for our Ohana, and even filed a stipulation waiver document from the Attorney General's office to expedite the contested case hearing process. Our family was informed on January twenty-second, the day before our contested case hearing, that it was denied. I emailed David Hope as our Ohana was distraught and confused and reminded him of our good faith as we did everything we were told to do and that we were promised a hearing. David had to reach out to Kali, to Chair Kali, and we were told that we could come in on the twenty-second. And after arguments was heard, our case was approved. But instead of that day in front of the commissioners, we were given a Hearing Officer. Hearing Officer David B. Kaupu informed petitioners that he alone would hear the evidence and recommendation and make a recommendation to the commission. This procedure did not seem fair or balanced, as we were discussing over three decades, actually, back to nineteen seventy-eight. And based on prior experience of unfulfilled promise and inconsistent treatment, petitioner Anna Ohana did not trust the process. However, I did encourage our Ohana to try again and remain willing to participate because this opportunity represents the only chance to explain their case fully, to seek the lease, and that would finally bring relief from the decade-long burden of protecting and maintaining their family home originally promised to them by their father. So we did come forward again, and we did request to reopen our contested case hearing. And I feel that if I didn't have email communications proving that these dates on this time we submitted this information, our family would be sorry to explain it, but just shit out of luck. I have to attach all of our email communications, and if I have a phone call, I need to send an email to reaffirm our phone call so that we have written transcripts of what is being shared between the department or being promised to us or told to us and what we are expecting. So to say we were already given a full and fair opportunity and denied to participate is a fair stretch of the overall facts. I asked for ho'oponopono for the dismissal to be vacated and reopen our contested case and to restore these kupunas and their Ohana to their home. As you are having this hearing today, if you have any questions, I'm open to hear them.
Okay, let's see, no questions, commissioners. Okay, so we're gonna take a recess, and during the recess, we're gonna have the contested case hearing involving this and deliberate, and we will let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. In writing.
Okay, no. So Ekala mai again, we have to clear the room. The commission is gonna be in deliberations before they take on the contested case hearing. But we can give time for people who wanna make stew if that is, before you go outside. So five minutes maybe before we clear the room.
Rubes, we can pass.
Rubes, we can pass. Do not hold.
Shana Lethem, tonight.
Shana Lethem? No? Go to the next one.
Okay, no response. The next person, J13, Richard Mayer.
He's on. There he is.
Hi. My video is not working. No, you can see me. Very good. Thank you very much. I want to first say thank you for letting me speak yesterday with regard to the Waihuli well project. And I want to particularly thank Chair Colleen Watson for urging that the item be deferred. I think that was the right action and I'm very appreciative of the fact that you listen to your community and beneficiaries. As a follow-up, I would like to offer some possibilities on how you may wish to move forward with the Waihuli project and particularly the water issue. Please reconsider the entire project and eliminate the illegal export of the water to South and Central Maui. Work with the County Department of Water Supply to create an improved, dedicated water supply and independent system for the Waihuli homelands. I believe that very much following the model that you had originally done where Hawaiian homelands would develop the system, put in the infrastructure, create everything and then hand it over to the Department of Water Supply. I believe the same model could be utilized, but instead of exporting the water to be able to use it on-site. The water department is already considering six new wells up-country on Maui, but they will be very expensive for the county to operate because they will be lifting water from a very deep level up to the 3,000-foot elevation. This will be very expensive, but the wells on the Hawaiian homeland site will not have that large lift and will be much more efficiently delivering water to the community. And I think the water department would be thrilled not to have to go to 3,000 feet, but to be able to do it on-site at the community level. The three wells that were originally being proposed were all, in my estimation, rather close together at the same 1,800-foot elevation. That could cause potential problems down the road, having them so close together, tapping really into the same spot in the aquifer. Perhaps they should be moved further apart and possibly at different elevations. An appropriate-sized solar farm could also be incorporated into the Department of Homeland's Waihuli site. There's land available to operate the well pumps, all dedicated, after all the construction is finished, to the Department of Water Supply for operations and to get your credits. Waihuli is a great addition to our Kula community. I've been a 57-year resident up-country, was a founder of the Kula Community Association. I was a former planning commissioner and I've worked on many of these issues in the past. And I'm so pleased that we were able to get the Waihuli community established and operating in our Kula, larger Kula community. I would like to see the community completed. Right now, I look at it and say it's like 75% completed. You have already prepared an additional plan below the present housing for housing, an economic development portion. I would hope that you would complete that and provide the additional residences and also reinforce the beginning efforts really for the Kea Kea farming community. And I think you can do this by providing a water system as I've just described. Now, I'd like to add one other thing that I think would be a suggestion that I would like to offer to you, in my estimation. And I've done manpower studies in Maui and et cetera. One of the problems with Waihuli is that the people who live there, the residents who live there, have to commute, many of them for an hour in each direction to Wailea and jobs far away from the site. I believe that Hawaiian homelands should be looking at setting up employment centers on the Waihuli site that would be able to employ the residents nearby, make it much, much more efficient for them on a daily basis, not to have to commute so long, two hours a day. And I'd like to offer at least one suggestion. There are other ones, but I'd like to offer, and that is as a nursing home. A nursing home has both skilled workers and as well as unskilled workers. And it could provide a real source of employment for the people there. Nearby, the Waihuli site is the Kula Hospital, which is, I believe, on seeded land. And a nursing home could be operated at the hospital or nearby or on the Waihuli land site itself. That's just a suggestion, but I believe setting up employment would help make this a really robust, active, good community with both employment opportunities, living arrangements, farming area, and as you have in your plan, a market and store-type operation. I would be delighted if you need to get in touch with me to work on this with our broader Kula community and look forward to hearing from you in the future. Thank you very much and best wishes on your efforts.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that the border water supply is building other wells that you're aware of?
Yes.
And what wells are you talking about? How many and where?
They gave a presentation on October 9th, a week ago, to the community and they have another one available on October 28th. It's at the Pukalani community center where they're outlining, and I have the PowerPoint that they used, where they indicated the location of the wells. I believe some of them are in Makawau, several of them are in Kula, and they're talking about either drilling new ones or purchasing some existing wells that are not yet operating in the area.
And they're just in those areas. What about the other parts of the island?
What was the question? I'm not sure.
Yeah, what other areas besides the ones you mentioned where they're thinking of building or installing other wells?
I'm not sure of all of their plan. I know that there, there's a lot of discussion, as you probably know better than I do, about the East Maui water and where that will go. Right now, part of that water, a small portion of it comes up-country, leaves, enters a treatment plant at around the 700 or 800-foot level and then is pumped uphill. And that water continues around the island in ditches. That water could very well be used for Palaehu Nui in ditches that go out towards that area. So that, that could be, it also could be diverted because it comes into Central Maui in ditches to the, eventually even to Wahe and Wahehu Heights, that area as well. So I think there are a number of options that could be put together to make for a very efficient, robust delivery system.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that information. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you and best wishes.
Okay, next agenda item, J15, Kenna Storro Gibson.
Hello, is my recording? For some reason, I can't tell. Yeah. It is? Okay, great. Aloha, Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate you being here and allowing for public testimony. I wanted to, I guess, testify, as you know, I've been here about Waipouli. I honestly am a bit dismayed at the events from the beneficiary consultation on Eva Beach because it was the same players, Christian O'Connor. Lay, are people able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I attended the consultation, as folks are aware, because I had been involved in doing some of the research on the environmental contamination concerns. And at the meeting, Christian O'Connor was coaching Russell Kaupu on how to respond to Ho'omilani's beneficiary concerns about the revenue being generated by the donation. And I was disturbed to, again, see Christian O'Connor giving different information from what Russell Kaupu had just presented. And it seemed to me that the same pattern had occurred with Waipouli courtyards, where Russell Kaupu would respond to residents' questions in one way and Christian O'Connor would give a very different response. And as I went to point this out during the consultation, you know, why is Christian O'Connor seemingly coaching Russell Kaupu on how to respond? I was verbally attacked and very aggressively approached by Iwalani McBreyer, who showed up standing over me, pointing in my direction, saying, "Why are you here? Get out of this meeting." "Howley, what are you doing here?" And this was concerning. I have never been attacked like this in a public hearing, I have to say. I've been to I have never been attacked like this in a public hearing, I have to say. I've been to many, many, many public hearings over the seven years I have worked in housing policy in Hawaii, and I have never been personally publicly attacked in the way I was on October 7th. And what's even more concerning is I don't think this was about my right to be there. I believe this was because I was questioning the development process happening and why there was interference from Christian O'Connor on Russell Kaupu's response to legitimate beneficiary concerns. So I just want to say that these processes of development that I witnessed with Waipouli courtyards and again appears to be happening with the EVA donation do not follow standard processes of due diligence, knowing everything about the proposal before there is a developer agreement signed, before there is a memorandum of agreement. And I would just request that, I am requesting that there be clarification on how beneficiary consultations are supposed to be conducted and what is the right of the public, even non-beneficiaries like myself, to participate in public hearings involving significant amounts of taxpayer money and taxpayer risk. Now, again, a donation is not money, but there is risk if the beneficiaries are being asked to pay for cleanup costs and/or not knowing the full information before signing a memorandum of agreement. So I just wanted to, I don't know, if I did file a formal complaint, I hope it was received. But I feel that it is important that things be conducted in a way that respects the right of everybody to attend a public hearing. So I appreciate that. Did people receive? I know I sent it via the port of Leia. Do you know, was that forwarded on to everybody, the official complaint?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And again, I just want to say, you know, I left the meeting a little bit shaken up, but you know, I understand. I understand that emotions get high. I get that. And I do understand that, but you know, what can we do to create a safe space? I guess that's what I'm saying. And what is the purpose of these meetings? So thank you. Thank you for allowing me to testify on that.
Thank you. Next testifier, Lourdes Torres.
Okay. Aloha, Chairman and Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Lourdes Torres and I am a current resident at the courtyard at Waipouli. And I've come before you, Commissioner, and Chairman and Commissioners. I have been really concerned about one thing and I'm going to take this opportunity to ask the question. And I wonder if there's any way I can get an answer maybe today? I saw the video that contained the meeting that was held by the council members and a group of residents. And I have on my notes, which I'm going to look for here, there was a gentleman by the name of Christian O'Connor, who was very, very helpful at the meeting and indicated during that meeting several times that the residents, like myself, who have been here long enough to qualify for the relocation benefits, et cetera, et cetera, would be assured that there would be 18 to 24 months before we would be expected out of here. So in other words, the transition of the residents being moved out upon closing would take 18 to 24 months. During that conversation, Christian O'Connor got a response from Russell Kaupu. My notes indicate he was very clear about the fact that that wouldn't be the case and that they could only honor those residents that have a lease that is contractual, right, that hasn't expired yet, that are not on a month-to-month. And so there was a little bit of a back and forth and I've been meaning to come before you, fine folks, to ask the question. Who is right? Is it Christian O'Connor who said, "Hey, don't worry, folks will never be thrown out on the street. This is going to be a process, right? Everybody that wants to stay is going to be given an affordable, excuse me, a comparable unit with the same price and the same et cetera. And if it's not the same price, if it just happens to be more, then you'll be compensated a 42 months, right, the difference." Is there any way, do we know this? I mean, we're so far in this. I saw a ceremony recently and I don't know if this is going to happen or not, but I wonder if it's fair to ask at this moment, Chairman, is Christian O'Connor correct about the 18 to 24 months or does Russell have a point that once you take over, anyone that does not meet the blood quantum, right, will be taken out within 90 days? Do you have an answer to that? Is there any way we can discuss that for a second?
Yeah, we can check on that and get back to you on it. I know there's, you know, some of the units already improved or upgraded and others need to be somewhat fully rehabbed and upgraded. And then some, I think, some of the tenants existing that are maybe recent tenants, I'm not sure if they'd be treated the same as those that have been there from the beginning, whether they are entitled under the federal law to, you know, moving expenses as well as subsidies on the rent. That I'm not sure. So for you specifically, if you can send us some information on that, I'll check with both of those guys and figure out which is the correct answer and get back to you.
I really appreciate that. Thank you, sir. And you're right. I understand that some of the leases even have some kind of stipulation indicating that if you come after, if you want to rent here after the contractual, right, the contract was signed in terms of buying, you know, you entered into contractual obligation to buy the property. If you're coming in after that, then you know, right, that it's being sold and you don't get a chance to get any compensation. However, yes, my situation is different. The consultants were very clear that I do qualify and that at one point they're going to reach out to us, but we're concerned because those of us who have real deep roots here, it's going to take a year or so to transition. And if we get thrown out, I understand if it has to happen in 90 days because we're not, you know, we're not supposed to be here after the closing, right? We are not allowed to be here by law, then it would be really nice to know that now, not tomorrow, not tomorrow morning. I think it's fair for our mental health and our spiritual health, you know? Yeah, that we have that information.
So just send me the info and we'll get back to you.
Thank you, sir. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you for communicating with you. Have a beautiful rest of your day.
You too. Let's see. Okay, the next. Okay, the next one, J17, Ole Hua Homesteaders Association. J17, Ole Hua Homesteaders Association. Yeah, the next testified, J18, Jan McKeppa, Waianae Homestead Association.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Leah, do I have calls?
Yes. You can run your, yeah, on your end.
Okay. Is my screen up? I'm sorry, I can't see on my end.
Yeah. You're good.
Mahalo. So Jan McKeppa, Pele Kikana, for the Waianae Valley Homestead Community Association. It's been awesome hearing all of the things that Maui is doing for Maui. So mahalo to the department and the community of Maui for allowing me to intercede with updates from our Inaho O'Pula Pula Abava or Waianae Ma'ahu'alo. So first update is Firewise HWMO. So our homestead is working in partnership with Firewise HWMO to become a firewise community. We are well on our way to completing the steps to be federally recognized. A community tour was done in August and an assessment was completed in September. And we are currently working on a couple of community events that would include, but not them too, decluttering, community garage sale, a green waste bin and community cleanup, an abandoned vehicle association fundraiser, or community gathering at Kaukuni Park with Firewise, HFD, DLR, DOFA and hopefully the department. And literally three days after the Firewise community tour, our homestead got hit with a wildfire. Fortunately, there was no loss of life or structural damage, but there was some damage to some edge shelters and equipment. But it was awesome to see our community come out and help our neighbors and HFD to contain the fire from any worse damage. And our homestead used this unfortunate incident to get more families signed up for and involved with Firewise. And due to the department's plans to develop many new homes for beneficiaries in the homesteads across the Pa'aina and that you are a staunch supporter and advocate for Firewise HWMO, may we ask the department to look into having developers start building homes with fire-retired construction materials? And then on this topic, I'd like to mahalo Ania Tanya Li'i of Inaho O'Pula Pula or Papa Kolea. The department has done well in choosing her to be the Firewise representative for homesteads across the Pa'aina. And it continues to be awesome working with her and all of the partners and teams of Firewise HWMO. The next update is our Kaukuni Park playground apparatus. So Kaukuni Park has been without a playground for almost 15 years while other parks have gotten new playgrounds. And in working with the Waianae Co's Neighborhood Board Parks Committee, we were notified that $100,000 was allocated for planning and design. So our board was given a few internet links to look at different models that were available. And as we looked through these many, many models of playground apparatus, we chose four that we felt would be a good fit. And then what we did was we surveyed our residents, so they also had a choice in the playground that our Kiki would enjoy. So the Poo Pahayayayay model was the overwhelming winner. And the plan is to also include a textile sun protection seal that goes over the apparatus and provides shade for our Kiki while they play. And so this is the copy of Poo Pahayayayay is what we call this model. So now the hard work begins to push for more funding for construction. Models such as these can easily run over $150,000 just for the apparatus alone. Infrastructure will also add to that bill. But we're optimistic that funding through the state and grants we hope to seek through a nonprofit can help to get our Kiki this much-needed and wanted playground. But we definitely take donations through the department should we feel so inclined. The next topic is our cesspool to sewer conversion mitigation. So as a pilot program for our homestead, the department applied for technical assistance through EPA's Closing Americas wastewater access gap program. The EPA contracted ACOM and ERG to do site visits to address and assess cesspools in Waianae Valley Homestead. And through their findings, they have compiled an extensive report evaluating possible alternatives and options. These findings will be shared out to our residents at our fifth sewer community meeting in late November. The data from this report will also help the department when applying for funding opportunities for this project. So we know that the road ahead is long and expensive, not just for our residents, but also for the department. Our residents have continued to stay engaged with the process. And we hope this pilot project can be a model for other homesteads of the state. Our association would like to mahalo the department staff, EPA, ACOM, ERG and the rest of the stakeholders such as the Department of Health, City and County Environment Services and others, for their continued help and partnership in this process. Vacant homes, we all, all of our homesteads struggle with vacant homes. So on August 29th, State Sheriff's Department and DHHS enforcement team evicted four squatters from a home in our homestead. The exterior and interior is in horrible condition. The evictees, one couple have been witnessed entering another vacant home and the second couple tried to pitch a tent, sleeping tent in Kaukuni Park. So our homestead has taken steps to speak to neighbors near other vacant homes to ask them to keep watch for any squatting. And these residents have been awesome in being vigilant and not wanting these illegal activities happening in empty homes near them. So this is just two pictures of the many pictures of the home that the squatters have occupied. And I only put two pictures on here just to spare everybody the atrocities that had happened there. And this was the day that the sheriffs had gone to evict the squatters. How do we cucko'oh our neighbors and our homestead community? So we found that there is a disconnect between the successors of vacant homes and the department. So we as neighbors first, then as an association second, hope to foster this pina with our families and to act as a liaison between them and the department to complete the successorship process. By working with the families and the department, our goal is for all of our vacant homes to be occupied, either by successor, transferred to family members or third-party beneficiaries or returned to the department's inventory for reissuance to someone on the waitlist. In doing this, it alleviates the families and the department of the long drawn-out process for cancellation pieces. So we are currently already working with two families of vacant homes and hope to continue with the rest. Maybe this can also be a model for other homesteads facing the same situation to cucko'oh our neighbors and rebuild the pina we all want and need. We also did get offered the license plate reader cameras. So at our last general meeting in July, David Hope with the department's enforcement team presented and proposed that our homestead consider installation of license plate reader cameras. Two cameras would be strategically placed, one at the front entrance at Tanya Key Street and one at the rear entrance at Kodea Bini Street. And that's the two entrances or two ingress and egresses to our homestead. And signage would also be placed in the areas as well. We had met with department's E-team and HPD's Major Mike Lambert. You know, of course, there are questions and concerns surrounding implementing this camera to record resident vehicles coming in and out of the homestead. Major Lambert ensures their purpose is to help with any investigation for illegal criminal activities. So not doing any illegal stuff, I'm sure you're not. But we're still doing outreach with our residents for their support and our board hopes to make a decision soon. And we hope this is a step toward a safe and healthy community. So I'd like to mahalo the board and the commissioners and our chair for the opportunity to share our community updates. Mahalo.
All right. Thank you very much. Next testifier, Demonte Manale.
On mute? All right. Video, please. Ken, unmute the video. Hello?
Yep, you're on there, man.
Okay. Video, Ken? Okay, there we go. All right. It's not for me. I'd like you guys to see my beautiful wife over here. She's still here. Anyway, all right, let's go. We ready. Been waiting a while. So congrats, first of all, I congratulate um our Lahui or Maui. Uh their ability to voice their issues in such a strong and passionate way that is respectful and comes with solutions. This is the kind of leadership that um a model that we should follow. I love Maui. Maui awesome. Molokai awesome, but you guys is just. You guys get them. Uh two, congratulations on Maui. Who just today, just today, guys. Has been recognized by National Geographic as one of the best places in the world. Destination for people to visit in a sustainable way. I just read that this morning, National Geographic. Right on, congratulations. Number three, congratulations to the staff of D H H L and all its employees who worked tirelessly in the background. And its heads who come to the commission in a respectful, thoughtful and coherent way. That allows this commission to make decisions based upon valid facts. I gotta tell you, everybody's just stepping up their game over here. The H H L stepping up their game, the staff back there, the the commission stepping up their game. Hey, things is happening. It's a good time to be Kanaka. Four, congratulations to this amazing commission for your collective strength of leadership. Thoughtful deliberation of issues presented to it and clear decision making. I, that is right there. The record is clear because we hold these meetings every month, right? Okay, lastly, as a person who considers myself as the greatest sinner. That comes before this commission on a regular basis based upon my heinous criminal past. I have this message for those who come here on a regular basis that create this hui of hate. And personal attacks against Kali, um Parita and Kyle, uh Christian, uh Okana, all, you know, all this kind. Personal attacks on people naming them by name and and and. Crapping on their name, bro. The the this is bogus, but anyway. I have this clear message for you that comes not from me. But from our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and it is found in the book of Luke, chapter seven. You should read them. In the, in, in which two classes of people are specifically identified by Jesus. One is a centurion who simply wanted to heal the healing for his servant. The others are lowly women who he, who demonstrated humility by washing Jesus's feet with her tears and drying it with her hair. In both these instances, Jesus acknowledged their love. And though the so-called leaders in the area looked down upon the woman. Who was called, who they called a sinner, Jesus so loved this woman's heart that he absolved her of her sins. In closing, we all have fallen short of the glory of the Lord, yet through Jesus, we all have hope of salvation. If we acknowledge our own faults and sins, especially those which think no one knows about. Or think we have, we have hidden from others while we attack others on their sins. He who is without sin, continue to cast your stone. Your day to answer for your own corruption will soon be exposed. End the self-hate and violent attacks. Or your. Oh, I see that list over there. Nevermind. Or your own past sins will be exposed, especially those ethical violations that you think we don't know about. I hear people coming over here casting aspersions on people, but they themselves live in a glass house. And number six, my mother would have a variety of sayings in Olelo Hava'i. You know, my mom and all the sisters, uh uh all the siblings, they all spoke fluent Olelo Hava'i, the Kawai dialect. And two, they were taken into the orphanages orphanages and forced to learn English, okay? So my mom them, they are Olelo Hava'i. My mom would have a variety of sayings in Olelo Hava'i. When she wanted to make clear point in how she felt regarding issues. In this case, a perfect saying my mom would use is Nieli'oko. You know, you can say the kind um um whatever, but Nieli'oko is clear. This commission meetings specifically deal with the issues regarding trust beneficiaries. This is for us, trust beneficiaries. For for non-trust beneficiaries, while you have every right to share your mana'o. Using your right to speak on issues that relate to trust beneficiaries should not be abused. When it is your clear purpose to create conflict between native Hawaiians. We have watched this age-old movie played out against all indigenous peoples, not just in Hawaii, but around the world. So to answer the question, what is these meetings for? This is our meetings. This is our meetings for trust beneficiaries. You know, my wife, she's highly Japanese. And you know, when, when it comes to her, she talked to me all the time. She said, you know what? These are your guys' issues and I shouldn't be involved. But when she get, when we get her riled up, she will come back and she will file. But um the point is, is that this is for us. This is our trust beneficiary. We are trust beneficiaries of our trust. And if you're only gonna come over here to create dissension amongst our people, well, check this out. We already know that movie. We watched that movie a thousand times. How you think we lost our country? Because people come in from other places and pit Hawaiians against each other. Kanaka, don't let them fool you, bro. They're not there for you. They therefore make a name for themselves. They therefore create dissension between us. Let's not do that. Let's follow the motto of Maui. Maui, right now, the Lahui is strong over there. They're united. They coming together and they coming with solutions, but if you haven't listened to the commission meeting these last two days. I was greatly impressed by our, by our people. They are on top of it. And this is what we need to do, especially on Oahu. We need to unify. Look at what White and I Homestead is doing. You just heard a presentation by Jen McKeppel. Amazing work that they're doing over there. They're bringing the people together. They're solving problems. Well, I like the fact that they're getting um cameras put in over there. That's because she right. If you're not doing criminal activity, you don't even worry about it. And I always drive in and out of there anyway, and I'm good with that. You know what I mean? So go for it, people. Let's continue to move forward and let the haters hate. They okay, you like hate, whatever, but we know who you are. We know what you're all about. And we're not gonna allow you to continue to do that. We're just going, take your opinion, throw them out the side, and we're gonna continue to move on. And by the way, but I don't go make any time with the commission, bro. Because that's our people over there. They make the right decisions all the time, every time. And you see them, they're not all one, one voice. They are individuals with their own voice. But together, they solve the problems that the, that the department bring to them. So congratulations to the commission and to the department. I love you guys. Right on. And my wife. Go ahead, baby.
My name is Aiko Manole and I approve this message.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good day. Okay, uh the last testifier, Jojo Tanimoro.
Ah, hello, everybody. Thank you for an opportunity to speak with all of you. Uh my name is Jojo Tanimoro and I come from Kauai Hi on a big island. And um I like listening to everybody that spoke up today. You know, yesterday we had the opportunity, well, I say, I had the opportunity to meet with our new West Hawaii supervisor. Thank you very much for filling that position for us. And I'd also like to thank our Commissioner Micae Freitas and uh David Hope for moving my request last month. We are moving. Thank you. So all these guys all talking about uh moving forward. The department is on it. Thank you, Chairman. Um, I do have a few things, though. I uh, number one, I'm going to start from the bottom of my written testimony. And that is to request, uh what's the update on. Awarding the vacant lots in Kauai Hi. They were approved back in March and usually it takes a month and then. Whoever comes back and and starts awarding these lots. Um, so we're waiting. It's October. If somebody can get back to us and let us know who's gonna go where. And I ask this because we're in rainy season. And some of these lots, when it rains, it erodes all over the road. So it'd be nice, I think, if we, if these people knew, because they're coming up and they're visiting all the lots. They don't know where they're going either. So I'm sure they'd like to know what's going on. But that's one consideration I'd like to ask. If somebody let us know who's gonna be awarded where. Um, the other one I'd like to bring up is the unexploded ordinance. Now, those people were awarded approval to go through Kauai Hi. To check for unexploded ordinance. And I went to their meeting in Waikoloa a couple of weeks ago, I think, or recently. And according to the head of the team, David Griffin. He said, nobody told them anything. Um. It kind of seems funny to have the land put aside for them to use, but nobody told them. So if somebody would go back, I think it was given out by Land Management Division. And then let them know we're waiting because now. The harbor is expanding. And with all of the incidents and events that are happening. We need an alternative evacuation plan for Down Vale. As well as Kailapa. Which brings me to my main topic. Uh that I had asked last month and I got a reply. And I really gotta thank uh Lillian Mokahila. She did reply on. An evacuation from Kailapa. Unfortunately, uh last weekend, we had an Ironman triathlon. And we were not allowed on the highway. And that's the only one road in and one road out. Our subdivision is between two gulches. So. Most everybody was at home. Now, next month, we're gonna have the men. Uh have their race, the Ironman. They've split it in two because there's so many people in this triathlon. So the women had theirs last weekend. And nobody could do anything or go anywhere or whatever. And so next month, we're gonna have the men. And then it becomes fire season. And we still got all the fence right around the subdivision, even if we could cross the gulf, we still cannot get out. So. Um, we're talking about this. Problem is, we used to have an escape. Evacuation route through the neighbor's subdivision Kohala Ranch. For the last three years, they have denied all public vehicles through their private gated community. So. We got nowhere else to go. We just gotta stay home, you know, um. If you gotta go work in the afternoon, you gotta leave five o'clock in the morning. Um, that kind of thing is happening. So I did take our supervisor around Kailapa. To take a look at where his boundaries are for Kauai Hi. And he was shaking his head too, but you know, he's getting to learn his route brand new. So we did take a uh run around. He got invited to go to the board meeting last night. I was asked to leave. I don't know why, but. Um, so I don't know what the board is doing. I, I'm not saying anything about. You know, our emergency route about that because they know that's what the community is working at. The board, I don't know if they're on board, not on board, or whatever. So there's two different entities that we're talking about. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask is. You know, the um. Right of entry we have with Poli Koki Ranch right now is for seven thousand six hundred acres. That includes the Makahuna Gulp, which is above the Kauai Hi Harbor. And that splits into the Poli Hi Gulp. Which uh Hawaiian homes had cleaned out the stream for those families. They are in a historic home. You know, their, their homes were there before World War Two. So. The reason for the, the erosion, a lot of it is because that gulf was blasted. In order to remove the boulders, to make the breakwater wall for the harbor. So it's already loose soil. So when it rains, it erodes. It erodes so bad, it's in the harbor. So that our fishing area is damaged. And that goes all the way around. Um to Kailapa subdivision, which is the whole boundary of Hawaiian homeland. So. It used to be a Kauai Hi fishing village in history and now it's all polluted. So. Uh according to the R O E, the um less sea or the permit T. Is supposed to manage the area because there's nobody up there. But nobody's managing the goats, the erosion. Next month should start the wind, so the wind gonna blow across the harbor. And then fire on that side is, was not included in the Firewise fencing. That went around Kailapa subdivision. So I took our supervisor around and gave him a tour so that he knows. But. What is the department doing to help us? Because when they renew the permit. They say everything is nice and pretty. And I said that it's not because of those, you know, where they erode, the highway get closed. So the storage container and the containers with the food, they come in on the ship. If the road is closed, then the barge not gonna unload. Right, Commissioner Freitas? Yes. So nobody gets food in the stores. So we need an evacuation plan. And I was wondering if the department can jump on it. Then I was told, you gotta check for the unexploded ordinance. And when I checked with the unexploded ordinance, they said they don't know anything about it. So we still going around and around. And um. I know it's the end of the day, I'm probably the last guy to speak. So I really wanna thank all of you for your patience and for listening to all of us. Because it's going forward. It's, it's moving. We've got communication now. Thank you, Commissioner Freitas and David Hope. You guys are helping us a lot. Mahalo.
Uh thank you, Jojo. Uh we do have one uh last uh testifier, Kapua Kaliko.
Well, mahalo for this opportunity to share. Um, sorry, I wasn't prepared for it, but I can give a quick recap. I do wanna thank uh. Kalai for his sharing. I don't think we have hate coming through. Uh it's. But we do need to make sure that we focus on content and not people so that it doesn't get personal. You know, there are times when we will name somebody so that it's not a quandary. But I would hope that it is not uh something that is intended to be offensive. Because you don't. It's not fruitful to try and be intentionally offensive. But it is and can be productive when you give specifics when it's necessary. Uh I do appreciate our beneficiary consultations and commissioners monthly meeting. But as part of government, all meetings are subject to everybody. That resides here and even visits if they even come from somewhere else. So while we say that the purpose is for the beneficiaries to communicate with and directly to the commissioners. The staff and yourself, Director Kali Watson. It is open to everyone to share, just as we had today. We had two, what I can. We had two, what I consider, but I could be wrong, non-beneficiaries that were given the time and the respect to speak to us. And we can learn from them uh, in different ways, even if it is something that we don't necessarily wanna hear, because we disagree with it. And it's okay to disagree. It's to have the discussion on what can we agree with? What can we come to an understanding on? Because there are times that we cannot get everything that we want. So we have to give, receive, give, receive. We do that in our own personal relationships, and that's the kind of thing that one would expect, not only as beneficiaries, but as human beings. So thank you for this moment, uh, long days. Thank you so much, commissioners for your time and the staff. Because uh, Kali, you have really stirred up the staff and brought on new staff. So you have opened up new opportunities, which brings about dialogue that we haven't had in the past. But I appreciate it, even if I may not agree with it. It's something that we should consider and we should discuss. Mahalo Nui.
Okay, thank you, Kapua. Okay, I will do the permitted interactions uh, with Commissioner Martio. We'll report on the permitted interactions for the month of October.
On October sixth through ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, Commissioners Arnelis, Lasua, Kalepa, Chair Watson and myself attended the Hawaiian Council's two thousand and twenty-five Native Hawaiian Convention held in Tulalup, Washington. We each attended various breakout sessions, including sessions on missing and murdered Native Hawaiian women, girls, Mahu, what is federal recognition, crafting an Aina aloha regenerative economy, and Chair Watson's presentation, Aina Ho'opula Pula the next one hundred years. Commissioners did not discuss commission business.
Okay, uh, we've come to the end of this month's agenda. It's been a long one, but uh, very productive. And we appreciate all the people that came and testified. It's uh, you know, it's a reflection of involvement and both sides, and that's real important. Uh, mahalo for joining us at the Pakukalo Community Center. Mahalos to Auntie Zelma, Janice, and Gracie for their outstanding hospitality. Uh, mahalo to Jermaine Bellino uh, and the Maui District Office for bringing us back into the community. Our next uh, regular uh, eight Hawaiian Homes Commission meetings will be uh, November seventeenth and eighteenth, and it's gonna be in Kapole. Uh, we are adjourned.